You are now live on Channel Eight in YouTube.
Great, thanks, TCTV. Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM. I'm Chairman Mike Curry and I call this Select Board Business Meeting to order on this 11th day of September 2024. Please stand and join me for the pleasure of leaving. I Thank you, everyone. Um, so I mentioned it's September 11th today. It is the 23rd Remembrance, the anniversary of the 9/11 attacks that took place on 2, in 2001. Uh, what I'd like, uh, thank you. We have a nice, large crowd this evening. What I'd like to do is just take a quick moment of silence in honor of all those lost their lives in the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Thank you, everyone. We'll never forget. Hey, I'd like to remind everyone that today's meeting is being broadcast live on TCTV Cable Station Eight in our YouTube web platform. For those who wish to revisit any part of the proceedings, the recording will also be available on our YouTube channel. Your subscription to TCTV would be greatly appreciated. Additionally, if any audience members are recording or plan to do so, please notify, please notify us before you start to record. Uh, we do have a forum this evening. Thank you, everyone. Um, we, uh, I will, uh, mention that, uh, Matt Rivard is, uh, joining us via Zoom. Now, hello, Matt. Can you hear us? Perfect. Our agenda tonight, along with other Pablo documents, is available at TempletonMA.gov, the official website for town information. Here, you can also subscribe to alerts for all public meetings in our Town Administrator's Weekly Report. For immediate updates, including emergency notifications, please enroll in our Code Red Alert System through our, our website or by calling 866-939-0911. This service is vital for staying informed on important and emergency matters. Please sign up. As Chair, I maintain the discretion to modify tonight's agenda as needed, uh, to manage time effectively, utilize personnel resources efficiently, and ensure public awareness. I reserve the right to rearrange our, uh, agenda items to best accommodate our proceedings and honor our guests. This is your first time attending a Select Board meeting. We welcome you. I do see a lot of new faces out there. Uh, we are committed to serving our community with patience, fairness, and efficiency. We ask for the same courtesy and engagement from all of our participants tonight. Let's have a productive and respectful meeting. All right. Uh, first item is approval of meeting minutes from, uh, our prior meetings, specifically for August 14th, 2024.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'm going to move to table these minutes until the next regular business meeting on September 25th, 2024, uh, for further revision for multiple reasons. The first, under, uh, new business action item, um, the, uh, there were two members of the board who recused themselves from that particular discussion, um, and they are not listed, and they should be. Uh, and also, um, at the very end of these minutes, under the list of documents and other exhibits used at this meeting, um, the list presented here is solely the items that were presented to the board during the meeting. Um, the actual items that were present, were presented in the packet one week prior to the meeting, as is normal, um, are not listed here, and they should be. Um, for those reasons, and if the board has any other, uh, has any other, uh, edits that they need to make for these, uh, minutes, I would say to present them now, but for these reasons, I am going to move to table until the next regular business meeting. Um, with the note that our, uh, our administrative assistant is, uh, brand new. This is her first shot at it, and all things considered, um, it was very good. Um, but we just need to, these things, uh, we just need to clean these things up to ensure, um, open meeting law compliance.
Okay, he made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, his motion and a second, any discussion? So I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're collecting it all so that we can pass it over, so Kelsey can add, add in the items that, uh, Matt went through, and then we can just revisit them at our next business meeting.
So to clarify, Matt, the list of documents and other exhibits used at this meeting wasn't full?
Yeah, correct. The only things there are what was actually given to us physically in the meeting two weeks ago. The list of, the list of things that was in the packet is not there, and it should be.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none on the motion to table the minutes for our next, uh, meeting with, uh, the, uh, the amendments. How do you vote? Tim?
Yes.
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 Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, thank you for that. Okay, uh, no executive session minutes. Uh, we are now on to citizen input. Is there any in, citizen input this evening? Anyone that has, uh, what, what were the hands again? Two, three, okay, four, five. Yep, if I could just ask people to keep it to, um, three to five minutes, so we don't go over for 20, our 20-minute allotment. We also do have a, um, a hearing this evening that was, that was posted, uh, for, we want to keep, keeping, uh, that amount of time. And as always, just mentioned, uh, name and street number when you have your, uh, at your time at the, uh, the microphone. Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to record portions of the meeting. Steve Windell from WGAW Radio.
Thanks for notifying us. Appreciate it.
Robert May, 137 Shady Lane.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna read a statement.
Okay.
Speak up.
Um, okay. Thank you. Good morning. We've had a full year of Mr. Curry back at the helm of the Select Board. Are we better off as a community? We apparently went from, we've got plenty of money, to we need an additional $5 million now. Ex-Advisory Chairman John Kaplis stated that at the last Advisory Committee meeting, $2 million override and 3.7 million for the debt. Okay. On May 24th, 2023, Mr. Curry was voted in as the Select Board Chairman. Mr. Curry made a statement to the taxpayers summarizing it. He promises to uphold dignity and mission of the Board, to follow Select Board policies in our handbook, maintain honesty and humor. You can see this on the May 24th, 2023 video at 19 minutes and 7 seconds. How is he done? On June 1st, I filed an open meeting law complaint concerning, concerning the Select Board for inaccurate insufficient records and insufficient agenda notification. If you wonder who is responsible for creating the agenda, the Chairman and the Town Administrator according to policy. On December 28th, 2023, the Attorney General confirmed the two open meeting law violations. Um, and it was never shared with the public at a meeting. I believe it because the two violating parties control the agenda, and it wasn't politically advantageous. Then, the September 26th Advisory Meeting, I filed a complaint with the town regarding bylaw violations as an advisory board, by the Advisory Board. Adam Lamontain, TA, responded, "Your complaint has no merit." I informed Adam and copied the members that the TA has no business answering a complaint, complaint of a bylaw violation according to Board policy and town bylaw. Then Mr. Curry took it upon himself, totally without authority by Board policy, to respond and deny my complaint. Mr. Curry did an investigation in a violate, in violation of the Board policy, procedure, and bylaw. This action required a public hearing before the entire Board, but Mr. Curry apparently does not follow those regularly, as pointed out by Mr. Bennett. Effectively acting under the color of law while violating it. What happened to your promises to uphold dignity, policy, mission, handbook? Wait, there's more. Since the creation of the PACS Infract Commission, I have been pointing out that you are in violation of Chapter 45. Chapter 45, Section 1, Definitions says, "In this chapter, the town shall not include a city. In this chapter, PAC shall include a city or town common dedicated to the use of the public or appropriated to such use without interruption for a period of 20 years." At Fall Town Meeting, November 15th, 2023, one hour and 44 minutes into the meeting, you can hear me trying to get Mr. Curry to understand the Board's continuing violation of Chapter 45 and his refusal to listen while misinforming the entire meeting. According, uh, Economic Development Industrial Corporation has been improperly formed and properly managed, violating tax code and using Templeton Corporation to cover a business meeting, using Templeton to cover the business meeting place, administration, healthcare insurance, retirement, et cetera, of its captured employee. Um, all funding so far has been dedicated to the members of the Board, particularly TCTV, Monmouth TV, MRPC, and Templeton Corp. There's no certification, no income, no assets, possible, possible misappropriated economic development funds to assist members who are directors of the Board and a potential ethics violation there. Many examples of this behavior over the past year to include intentional violations of ADA rules, noncompliance with Community Preservation Act regarding quiet ADA compliance. We recently heard a Board member, Tim Toth, state that he had agenda requests for administrative actions blocked by Adam and Mr. Curry, who control the agenda. Why is our accountant suddenly gone? Is it a secret? Only four means given in personnel policy to separate an employee. Which one? Did they violate the law, the policy here too? Enough is enough. Due to these and many other failings by this Board under the chairmanship of Mr. Curry, I am requesting that the Board, as permitted by law, vote to remove Mr. Curry from the Board of Selectmen and also to begin a search for a new Town Administrator who follows the law, policy, and procedures their contract requires. Thank you.
Thank you. You can, um, you'd like to send that to us?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll keep it short.
Okay.
All right, so Liz Toth, Gray Road. Uh, first, I want to ensure that you did the copy of my, the OML complaint this morning.
Received by the clerk and distributed, yes.
And to you, you have a copy. Okay, good. That's the first thing. All right, sorry. All right. So
It'll get to something.
So the next thing, the next thing is, and this is addressed to both, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Rivard and Mr. Bennett as the Vice Chair and as the clerk. I am formally requesting that together you conduct an internal investigation of a certain town employee for failure to comply with their employment contract and assigned job duties. I believe this individual either directly or via the direct reports violated town policy, town bylaw, state law, and federal law, and has taken actions not within their defined authority. I'm asking that you assess the situation, and if my beliefs have merit, to initiate corrective action. I will provide the individual's name and the details requested within the investigation under a separate cover in, in order to protect the individual's privacy. Second, Mr. Chair, I realize most likely that you will put, put this request also on ignore. Paraphrasing Ms. Griffith's, uh, statement in a previous meeting, people are paying attention. It saddens me to have to file formal complaints for you to take my concerns seriously. It has become extremely obvious, even though you say you will address my concerns, your actions to date indicate otherwise. It, it is my opinion that you have a conflict of interest getting in the way of you successfully fulfilling your duties. In my opinion, you are ineffective in your leadership role as the Chair of the Select Board, and I'm respectfully requesting your immediate resignation from the Town of Templeton Select Board. And, um, I really, uh, it's time. It is just time, Mr. Curry, for you to stop ignoring people. Thank you.
I have to sit down so I don't fall down. I'm Beverly Battole Mayo. I live at 686 South Road, Templeton. I've lived in this town my whole life. I'm gonna be 79 in May. My best friend was Gladys Salem. She was the first woman selectman in the Town of Templeton. She was a schoolteacher, and she was a smart woman. In 1999, the financial problems in this town were very apparent. We had to change the way we did business when 2 and 1/2 came in. Since then, ever, on an average of every five to six years, we have broke. I have new neighbors. My house is paid for, thank God. I have new neighbors that have paid $65,000, $75,000 for homes. They have four kids. You have to follow a budget. Where do you think money is coming from? I don't want 20 or 30 empty houses in this town again. You know, sit there and tell each other what a good job you're doing, and then turn around and say, "Oh, we need a $2 million override," and then we'll get asked for a debt exclusion. And then we have a town meeting when people are still on 495 or Route 2. The Templeton rut just gets deeper and deeper and deeper, and I'm damn sick of it. I am old. I ain't gonna be here, but everybody else is gonna be. And I'm telling you guys, clean up your act. If you can't do the job, get out. If we hire people and we're paying them big bucks and they don't do it, this is not a charity. It's a business. They need to go. Our town accountant hasn't passed the test. She should never have stayed, but nobody has the backbone to do what is right. You can't do that. This is a business. It's ain't a club. Jeffrey is the only one that looks things up. People sat in them seats before you guys showed up. There are things that have to follow through, things that we made decisions four, five, six years ago that should be followed through. We can't even get a central location for supplies for crying out loud. You can't run a business like this. I really, truly, in my heart, believe selectmen do not work. They do not have the intelligence. They don't have the time to look things up to know what the hell they're doing. So you just respond to any crisis that comes your way, but we have no plan. You know, this thing coming in on, in Waldenville. Holy smoke, nobody even looked to see what the hell it was. I heard we're gonna have a 50% discount on their taxes. Roll out the red carpet. The whole neighborhood is full of cancer. Parkinson's. You know, do your job. Take the damn thing, pave it, put the highway department there. Foot, take the, where the town, town highway is. Put the rescue and the ambulance service there and the fire department, so it's centrally located. If my house is burning on the, in the South Road, they're gonna save something besides a cellar hole. If you're on Royalston Road, at least you have a fighting chance. But you have to have a plan, and you can't prove to me that you guys could follow a plan if your life depended on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't.
How many in the back? Rachel, you put your hand up? Okay, and, and, okay, about three more?
Yeah. Hi. Hi, Mr. Chairman, Julie Richard Orchard Lane, Templeton. I just want to commend the current Board and the previous Boards for their hard work. The nine years that I happened to be on this Board, it was a balanced budget. So pat yourselves on the back. You should be commended for that job. Thank you.
Gail and Rachel? Thank you.
Gail Noel, 87 Winchester Street. Um, I only have two, um, questions. Um, I saw the ad for the town accountant, and it said 38 hours a week. Will our next accountant give us 38 hours at full-time pay and not get full-time pay from three different towns?
A, as advertised, I would say, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and I just wanted to know the, um, status of the bid for the kitchen?
I, uh, we do have, uh, a gentleman for the ARPA update.
Okay.
We'll definitely give you a detail. Okay, thank you. Is there any other, uh, citizen input after Rachel? Okay. Last one. Rachel, and if we can keep it to three to five minutes, I would appreciate it.
Good evening.
Please.
I'm Rachel Herman, 41 Pleasant Street.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of a community group called Templeton Toxic, Templeton Community Against Toxic Waste. About a month ago, we started a petition, and it has now gone beyond 600 signatures. The petition is essentially aimed at... Can everyone in the cheap seats hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
The microphone, the microphone doesn't project to the room, so they can hear you.
I can hear you. I'm deaf.
Okay. Interesting.
Um, the, the petition was started about a month ago, and it reads as follows, "Dear Adam Lamontan, we urge you and the Town Treasurer to immediately take the property," which means foreclose, "at 24 Holman, Waldenville, for back taxes, thereby acquiring valuable real estate. Doing this will forever stop the building of a plastic waste incineration plant. Templeton, it would add long-term value to the town, the residents, and their descendants. Residents of Templeton and surrounding communities would be irreparably harmed if a plastic waste incinerator, so-called advanced recycling, would be built in Baldenville to process up to 500 tons of plast, waste plastic a day. The increased risk of fire explosions, diesel, smoke, dust, toxic cancer-causing emissions, noise pollution, hazardous waste, and decreased quality of life and property values are unacceptable. And I want to add, because it is 9/11, this would risk firefighters' lives also. And I think that's important to keep in mind. A giant incinerator plant does not belong in a thickly settled village like Baldenville or anywhere else in Templeton. It's well-known that McValley bought the property knowing about the back taxes and has not paid them at all. The judgment from Judge Patterson was that they should pay by July 1st, and the town has delayed and dragged its feet in acquiring the property. You have the opportunity, Mr. Lamontan, to do good by the town by listening to the community's deep concerns for future generations' use of this site. Um, and I am here to present the signed petition. Does somebody want to take it? Somebody from the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone to help?
Don't.
That's a party for the town. Oh, another one. And another one. My children.
No, they're not the same.
No?
No.
Okay. They're, they're all...
There's no repetition. They're all, thank you.
He said 600.
Okay. You can just give me the, the pile. Got it?
Okay, one more. How about that? Good luck. And let me close by saying, I know, um, everyone here cares about their families and their town and their neighbor's health, and I would expect that people would start acting like that is the case by making this case go forward in the court and going after the petition to foreclose on the property.
Thank you.
I spent some time this afternoon speaking to the Town Treasurer. The land is in foreclosure. She's worked, she's got it in process. It takes time. How much time? She's not sure. The company, they can come in at any time and pay the taxes off. They can, they have up to a year after the foreclosure to pay the taxes off. In reality, the selectmen have zero nada to do with this. But our Board of Health and our Building Inspector are going to be huge. The Board of Health, I have a lot of faith in. She will, she will protect us to the best of her ability, and so will the Building Inspector. So it is in process. She has done her job. She has to follow the law. She can't make miracles. So that's where we stand with that. So I want you guys all to know that, all right?
So it is actively in foreclosure now?
Yep, it's in process. She says it takes forever and a day.
It is an input. So Bev is not speaking on behalf of anyone else other than, than Bev. So as far as citizen input, this is an open book. Sir, did you have it? Did you have something?
Yes.
Okay. Wrap up citizen input for this evening.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hooper. I live at 58 Baldwin Drive. Um, I just want to know if the three questions presented by the attorney, um, have been answered to proceed with the foreclosure. Have those been answered?
Do you have to ask the Treasurer? Um, yeah.
Do you have, do you have the questions?
Yes, I do. They're right here.
If I may.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Lamontan.
I follow up the treasure collector. Those are being worked on.
They're being worked on or they've been answered?
They're being worked on, and the attorney will be answering them.
When will that be?
I don't have a...
We will likely have a future agenda.
Well, I think time is, it's been stressed here is, is very valuable, because everything legally has a cutoff period, where if it's not done at a certain time period, then we, we've lost that ability. Um, and this question was asked, these three questions, I guess, looking at this, I, I apologize for not having the information like, uh, but the three questions were asked long enough ago that they should have been answered, and we should already be in the foreclosure process. So I'm a little frustrated, first of all, by the lack of communication of the town to the people in the town.
Okay.
Um, as I'm doing research, I just, like, I, I was here Monday night. I just found out about this recently. Um, I'm doing my, the best to catch up on all this. I spent some time going through the thousands of pages of test holes that have been done. This property is highly contaminated, and it just, it's amazing that, first of all, that this property passed hands with a $500,000 debt. And I was given the reason Monday because it was cash. Well, maybe I'm wrong about all this, but I am a contractor. If I do work at anybody's house and they refuse to pay me for about 20 bucks, I can go and file contractors' lien. 20 years after I do that, you decide to sell your property. The first thing that's got to be done is that lien that I put on has to be paid to me in full, so then there is clean title. So in essence, that property did not have clean title. Doesn't matter how it was paid for. So I'm curious also on all this is how that passed hands without the town having received the $500,000 taxes that it was owed. I find that, uh, actually, in all honesty, a forensic audit should be done. I find that, actually, in all honesty, a forensic audit should be done. That's what should be done. And it's not, you know, people have joked about, but I...
It should have been done a long time ago.
A forensic audit, and because that would show how that property, and the other question, and I'll make it quick. I get, I get there's a lot of stuff going on. But there is even question how the person that signed off on that property and transferred the property had the legal ability to sign off on that, to even do it. So this goes back to, like, two o'clock in the morning, we're going to make some rules, because nobody will show up for the meeting, so we can just do whatever we want. I find, I... A quick side note, and then I'll step away. I decided last year I'd go up to Portland, Maine, and we'd look for some sea glass. And I've never seen a lot of this stuff, but after I did, I did some investigating. So I'm walking along with my kids, and seeing these tiny little pellets. I'm like, that's really weird. You talk a twenty feet of beach. It's not a lot of beach that I was on. All of a sudden, it really, thousands of these. Then I started doing a little research, wanted to know. Detroit, they lost the entire waterway because there's a plastic facility, and these go airborne. They've lost their water source. It's killing the fish. The water's unsafe. Why are we, why are we taking our time on this? I really am doing the best of my ability not to shout and scream, because I don't think it'll do any good. But I want to stress, somebody's not doing their due diligence here. And if that's the case, if you don't want a job, resign. But don't make us pay for it, so you can just sell your house when they do decide to do this, and you walk away. Because I can't walk away. I don't want to walk away. My original intent, and I'll be honest, I'm very honest, straightforward, my original intent when I bought the property is to flip it. I get to know the neighbors. All of a sudden, I really like Templeton and Baldwinville. I'm staying. Well, for my backyard, if this goes in, I'll see the smokestack. It's not exactly why I bought the property, and that's, that's the least of it, is seeing the smokestack. That's, that's a minimum. I mean, that's a little eyesore. People really need to do something to stop this, and we have the power to do it. I'll close with that.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. When there's other agenda items on here, because I was interested in some of the environmental report on Holman Street, will be able to ask questions then, or is this the time to bring the comments?
It's not. It's, if we have an agenda item on there, obviously, that's the time to talk, for questions and otherwise. We haven't even gone into the report yet. Citizen input is, is an open time for citizens to, as you heard, along a wide range of different topics, but it's the ability for citizens to come in on that and speak their mind. So there is going to be opportunity to do that. You don't have to do it now.
So when that, that report's done, I could ask a question at that time? All right.
I can make this quick. I don't know. There are some questions, but...
Is it on an agenda topic, or is it in spirit of citizen?
It is on the Holman Street. It is on the middle.
Okay. Well, it's, you should understand the difference between the citizen input, if you had a statement or otherwise, like, that was...
No, then I'll wait until they come up.
Yeah, it's like, you'd be short-circuiting, all going right to it. Okay, all right. We're going to close citizen input. Thank you for everyone's input this evening. Number five, administrator comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually first wasn't going to have any comments this evening, but since public input, I do appreciate the fact of civic engagement, whether it's critical or positive, whatever it might be, because I think it's important that we're a community, we all care. But I want to say this about the site. This is an ongoing legal matter. I'm not going to be commenting on an ongoing legal matter. And I'm going to urge the board not to put it on the agenda. If they want to discuss it, they should go into executive session. Because it's, it's, right now, the town is court, this is an ongoing case. That's why you haven't heard much of anything. So I think it's very important that the folks understand that, and I'll leave it at that. And I do, I do thank the residents for their participation in the process and being engaged in the community. I think that's very important, and I'm actually thrilled to see this room packed this evening. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving into new business, introduction of new employees. I know I saw that we have Ryan is online, and how about Percy Scootin?
Right here.
Hi, Percy. How are you? Good to see you.
Thank you.
So if you, go ahead. Thank you.
Well, start with Jackie Prime from Community Services. Introduce the senior center manager.
Perfect.
Jackie, if you could take it away.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'd like to introduce Ryan Brown as our new senior center manager. Ryan started this week. She did attend a barbecue a few weeks ago to just meet some people and introduce herself. And she wrote the greeting for October's issue of the Senior Buzz, which is great. She brings a warmth and friendliness that I think she's really curious to learn everything about the job, and I think she's going to make a great part of our team. Ryan, if you'd like to say anything?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be here, and I'm so excited about my new position. So far, I've served lemonade. I did pretty good, from what I understand, and they seemed happy about it, but I'm really happy to be here, so thank you. Thank you, Jackie.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Ryan, do you live here in town?
I live in Gardner, so close by.
Okay. All right, well, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very important position. Can you get anyone else from the board?
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Happy, happy to hear that we're seniors are getting attention now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Percy Svelton to you. He's fellow in one of our vacancies on the highway department. I believe this is his second full week. I welcome Percy joining the team. He does come with some past municipal experience.
Excellent.
And I'm looking forward to serving the community to the best of my abilities.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Are you, are you in town?
I'm in fifty-one Page Street, Lunenburg.
Okay. Not a bad commune.
It's a good community. It's a good community. I've been there my whole life, so seen a lot of changes.
Well, thanks for joining the team, Percy. We definitely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to Templeton. Welcome to Templeton. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Jackie. All right, that's, that's all we have for introductions of new employees. Under appointments, we did have a capital planning, but the appointee did rescind their community interest form. We're now up to item C. This is our public hearing for this evening. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing in reference to the Fifty Brooks Village Road gravel permit renewal.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
I have something to say about that.
Yep, we're, we're, we're just getting into it. Yep. I'll, I'll give the instructions in a second, sir. On the, on the motion to enter into the public hearing, how do you vote? Tim's?
Yes.
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 Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We are in public hearing as of seven oh nine. Okay, Glenn, if you could come up. The way public hearings work, especially for a renewal on a, on a gravel permit, we have the petitioner. We, we, we hear from you, sir, from, from Mr. Radigan. The board can ask any questions. Then we hear anyone opposed to the permit renewal. Then we'll collect any final, final questions. I'll ask for a final recommendation, then we will close the hearing, and then the board will deliberate on its decision.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Glenn Radigan, Fifty Brooks Village Road, looking to renew my three-year permit for gravel removal at the same location.
Does the board have any questions on the permit for renewal? We've got his app, you have the application in front of you. It was in the packet. Are there any questions for Mr. Radigan?
You have multiple dots.
Right. Glenn, there are no questions for you?
I can say I do live, I can hear that sometimes when they're in the pit, but it's never out of hours. I know that some of the trucks that go in and out are very respectful of Baldwinville Road. You know, a neighbor, I don't have any complaints.
Okay.
That's just me.
So you're offering that as...
Testimony in his behalf.
Okay. Just...
Well done.
Based on that, just make me, if you're, if you're offering that as a witness, just consider that when we get out for deliberation.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Mike.
If you, if you recall, okay. Anyone opposed to the project at all?
Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. You had a question. Sorry, I couldn't, couldn't see that you had your hand up.
Thank you. Mike, just to, looking at the permit, there's a note on the top of the application for permit removal of sand and gravel stating that Mr. Radigan is in compliance with all departments and has provided all needed documents. Can I just ask who added that note to the top of the permit?
Adam, did you hear the question with the note at the top? The permit is received by...
It looks like Holly's handwriting.
Holly? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's who accepts the permit, I mean, Dex on... Thank you. Anything else, Matt?
No, I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is anyone speaking for? I'm now against. Sir, do you, did you have something to add? Okay, Glenn, if you could just move to the side for a moment. Come on up, sir. We just need your name and address at the table. Thank you.
Mike Radigan, Four Quarters Lane, East Templeton. My father started that gravel operation many years ago. He died six years ago. And I was here three years ago, and I thought this should have been sealed off and ended. And now he's, he said he was going to, he needed three years because of the virus, and he wanted to plant blueberries. Well, here we are, three years later, and now he's asking for another three years. What's up with that? And I think that open pit's dangerous, and it should be fenced in so nobody gets hurt. And that's about all I got to say about the whole situation.
What's your relation to Glenn?
I'm his brother, the oldest one.
Okay.
I'm taking care of my mother.
Okay.
And he's no help.
Nice. Okay.
That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radigan. Is anyone else speaking against the, the permit for renewal? Okay, hearing none. Any final questions from the board? Or any of the people offering witness?
I'm just wondering what, why you thought it should be closed.
It's there. It's three years ago why it should be closed.
Is it...
That was my father's operation, not his. My father started his school, tried to sell a school of hard gravel out of there, and he threw me out of the property.
Back in February two thousand ten.
To answer the question, yep.
Back in February of two thousand ten, my father approached me and created a trust of the property, protected it from any kind of nursing home he may be put in. So we created the Radigan Family Trust, and I am named the trustee. I have the documents on file here with Holly, because we had a problem with this three years ago when I went to renew. The land is mine. All the permits have been mine. I've been the manager of everything. This is not my first rodeo. I've been doing this since ninety-nine.
So it's not a matter of safety?
All slopes are engineered according to plan on the property. There is no cliffs. There is no holes. Everything's sloped according to thy plans.
Let's just make sure we have questions, and you are offering, you are offering testimony. You just got to decide which, which you're wanting to do. I mean, you kind of already did. Okay, any other questions?
Point of order. Is she speaking as a select person or as herself?
Terry, could you answer the question?
I'm going to wait till the hearing's over, and I'll be speaking as a, as, oh, I get it. Yeah, so I should get up there then?
Are you speaking as a select person, or are you speaking as an individual person? It is important to know the difference.
As in a butter, as, is how she characterized herself. If you, if we're to consider any testimony that you, you had, that you have to offer it as in a butter.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
He says it's in a trust, Radigan Family Trust. Is it for the real Radigan family, my mother and my younger brother, or is it for that fake Radigan family that lives over there?
I did not have that question. No one on the board had the question about what the, the condition of the property was, but this is an application for renewal of a permit.
I was named as a trustee.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner or anyone in a proposition? And you're... Yep, but the, for the point of order, could you at least state, are you offering it as a witness? Are you offering the information as a witness?
As a witness, yeah, as a neighbor.
Okay. Thanks for the point of order.
I have another question. How long is this going to be? Forever?
No, sir, this is a public hearing this evening. If there are no other questions, we're going to close the hearing and have the deliberation.
I'm talking about the gravel operation. How long is this gravel operation?
The permit in front of us is until twenty twenty-seven. It's a three-year permit.
Right, and this, three years ago, he said he was going to plant blueberry bushes, and now here we are, three years later, and what's another three years? His excuse three years ago is because of the virus.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any, any, any discussion on coming out of public session, public hearing? Hearing none on the motion to come out of public hearing. How do you vote? Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mark, Matt, sorry?
Mark's my father. Yes.
I vote yes as well. We are out of public hearing at seven seventeen PM. Okay, we have the consideration and deliberation for the three-year permit, a renewal. It's a motion for or against the permit?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to renew the permit for removal of soil, soil, balm, sand, or gravel behind Fifty Brooks Village Road, submitted by Mr. Glenn Radigan.
Do you want to do the expiring, Matt?
Expiring. Expiring. Here, I know it is.
Nine fourteen.
Nine fourteen, two thousand twenty-seven, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-seven.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Tim?
Yeah.
I think Jeff beat me, but...
Okay, it's been seconded.
Yep, I just want to make sure that we get the minutes right. All right, any discussion on the approving the, the renewal?
I have not.
Okay. And you're speaking as a wit, as a witness?
As a neighbor or a brother, yeah, not as a select board.
Matt, do you have any questions or any, any, any other deliberation?
I have no other comments, other than, other than absent of any sort of reason to deny the permit, that the board, the board should consider that the permit is, that the permit is valid as presented, and it should be approved.
Thanks, Matt.
Best to the family.
Adam, did you have something to add?
I was just going to add, because there was a valid concern brought about fencing and safety. I mean, I'm not sure if any of the board have been to the site. I mean, do you, do you think it would require fencing? I mean, I just want to rule out the safety matter.
Again, it was, you know, my perception is it's a renewal of an operation, as, you know, Terry, as a witness, said it, it's been ongoing for some time, so I look at it as a renewal.
Are there any bylaws about fencing? Who wouldn't have approved the... Are there any bylaws about fencing? Who would have approved the renewal, like just us?
Well, the board could set the renewal.
I've seen it, I see it all the time.
But you could set the renewal with conditions. So I just, I just wanna rule out, I just wanna rule out the fencing matter. I mean, maybe we're better off tabling it to the next meeting, that would be the members I haven't seen, whether they believe it's a safety matter. I, I don't know, I'm just trying, a safety matter is brought up, I just wanna bring it to the board.
I can say if there's a gate and it's not, there, like, there's no houses directly abutting it, it's his house and behind his.
Yeah, I'm, at this point, you're gonna have to recuse yourself, cause any, any other testimony that you, that should have been in, in, in public, so if you could just refrain from comments.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, I'm gonna call the vote. On the, on the, uh, motion to approve the, uh, renewal of the removal of sand and gravel permit to expire on ninth, uh, fourteen, twenty twenty-seven, how do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Terry?
Yes. Oh, I think. Recuse.
Correct. Abstain.
Abstain.
Yep, thank you. Uh, Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. The, thank you. Permit, um, is approved. Hey, item D, um, uh, Mr. Tal, if he would come up, um, the chair, we've got a update related to the invite, uh, E P A work on the Holman Street site. Glad to meet you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Point of order, I'd like to enter into the record that we were handed a document of three pages and, and we have a copy into the record copy for later.
Adam, do you have a copy? Okay, yep, thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, my name's Wing Chow, I'm the on scene coordinator overseeing the removal action at the, uh, former Templestow site. And, uh, thanks for inviting us to give you an update. Uh, so what you have in front of you is a small information packet. Uh, the first page is, is a, a quick summary, uh, we can go through it quickly. Uh, as you're aware, we mobilized the site during the week of July eighth, uh, to begin our removal action. Uh, the activities included setting up the site, uh, mobilizing personnel equipment, uh, establishing the work zones. The week after that, the week of July fifteenth, that's when we started, uh, soil excavation work and stockpiling, uh, as of early September. We've got approximately four thousand cubic yards of, uh, contaminated soil stockpiled, uh, ready to go. We're, we're working on the, the transportation and disposal portion of, of that work. Uh, once we get those approvals in place, we can start shipping, uh, the waste stream offsite for disposal. Uh, we're expecting the soil excavation activities to be completed by mid-October, uh, but the, the transportation disposal will be ongoing. We're estimating that the transportation to dispose the portion of the work, uh, will probably be done by mid, mid-November to early December timeframe. Um, at the same time, we'll be backfilling the excavated areas, uh, so in a similar timeframe of, of, um, late November, early December, we'll be done with the restoration work of backfilling. Uh, we'll place some, uh, grass seeds down to reestablish a, a vegetative cover. Uh, we'll come back in early springtime to, to take a look at the vegetative cover. If needed, we'll come back and hydroseed again. And that, once, once the removal action's completed, we'll, we'll put together what we call an after-action report, uh, which will, uh, summarize our activities, include all the sampling we've done. Uh, once that's, the report's finalized, we will distribute that to, uh, to interested parties. Uh, on the next page, I included a figure, it's basically the sample locations that was done by, uh, the, the previous work on the brownfields and, and also the additional sampling that we did back in June and July of this year. Uh, the reason I added this figure is just to show you where we're doing the soil excavation work in, in relation to where the standing building is. Also, that, in the summary, I, I did mention the, uh, the concrete slab that busts the, the, uh, standing building. We, we're planning on removing and disposing of that as well. And the last page is just a copy of the fact sheet that we sent out in, uh, mid-July to, uh, nearby residents within a half-mile radius. That was sent up to inform the work, that we were on-site performing work. We provide our contact information if there were questions, uh, and also our, our community involvement coordinator also hand-delivered, uh, this fact sheet to, uh, the residents living immediate adjacent to the property. And that's, uh.
Wing, how was that sent out?
It was, it was mailed, it was mailed to residents living within half-mile radius.
Okay.
And then the properties that are immediate adjacent to, to the site, uh, uh, community involvement coordinator had that walked to each property and hand-delivered it.
And we put it on the town website.
Right. And, and any questions for?
Yeah, I wanna go for the, for the board first.
So just one, um, one little correction on the report that was in our, our pack, approximately eight thousand two hundred people live in Baldwinville, it's in Templeton, right? And the elementary school that's in the one point one point two site description, it's no longer an elementary school, it's going to be, um, affordable housing.
Okay.
So it's no longer an elementary school, it's in the process of becoming of affordable housing and then it's eight thousand two hundred people live in Templeton. Thank you. And I, um, I noticed that you're gonna be removing the, um, contaminated concrete pad, cause you did the stockpiling on the concrete pad. And in this new report here, it says you're stockpiling again. Are you stockpiling on the concrete pad that you're gonna remove, are you stockpiling on, so you're, you're, you're?
We're moving the, the concrete pad that was stockpiled.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then I was wondering, um, if, um, you're gonna test the groundwater? Do you go that far down to test the groundwater where that's been sitting, that concrete pad's been actively had PCBs to my knowledge, cause of the last.
Yeah, well, under Rob program, we're not gonna be testing groundwater, the removal program. I believe in the brownfields portion, they've done some groundwater sampling, I'm not sure exactly where they did the monitoring wells. Uh, but that's evaluated by other folks besides our, our program, see, the emergency response program, we're there to basically do a risk reduction and we're, we're addressing the stuff that's at the surface that poses a contact threat. Issues regarding groundwater is a different pro- uh, will fall under different programs. Uh, we can, um, put that request to the other folks that, that might fall under their programs. But as far as this, this removal action, uh, that's something that we wouldn't be addressing.
Is it a different, uh, division under the EPA, just not emergency response?
Well, we're most likely to fall under the Mass D E P first.
Okay.
So do we have to have that in another meeting to vote on that, or can we request that, uh, to have the groundwater tested? I mean, there's two unnamed streams out there. You have the Depot Pond Dam, Otter River State Forest.
I understand.
Wells.
Mm-hmm. As far as a comprehensive, right, so I understand what you're saying, like what is, what is the overall comprehensive plan, other than what, um, Mr. Chow is coming in, doing?
Yeah, and then it's.
Did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in.
Sure.
Uh, I'm lovely, I'm one of the section managers in our emergency planning and response branch. Generally speaking, when it comes to groundwater, more comprehensive site investigations, if EPA does it, that's done by a remedial program, but that's after consulting with the state of Massachusetts. Under the twenty-one E program, the state would take the lead and if they thought that the site warranted further investigation and they didn't have the resources, they could request our pre-remedial program to evaluate the site to see if the site would score high enough for listing as an actual national priorities list site.
Okay.
A super fund site.
Got it.
It's a pretty high threshold.
It has been before, I, I believe.
I don't know. It's, it's, it's a, it's a high threshold, the governor needs to concur with the listing of the site. Um, it, it's, so generally what happens is those groundwater investigations are typically done by the state. Uh, Kevin Dowst at Mass D E P, we've been communication with him, is there any questions about groundwater or things that go outside of the scope? You know, my suggestion would be to reach out to Mass D E P, we work in partnership with that. Does that help answer your question? You know, we're not, we're not gonna be doing any groundwater or, or surface water testing, that's outside of the scope of our program, as Wing pointed out. What we deal with is the immediate threats, the direct contact, things that are kind of longer-term issues or, or more challenge to investigate, that can be done either by the state or they can petition EPA's pre-remedial program to evaluate and then it's, if it scores high enough for listing, then we could go down that route, but, uh, there's a lot of work that typically gets done by the state before that, we get to that point.
How do we follow up on that, Ben?
Um, the, the name you mentioned?
Kevin Dowst at, uh, Mass.
Is it someone that you're familiar with? Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's the follow-up, to ask the question about groundwater. Hang on.
And do you, um, in your final report, give an, uh, estimate of what the property can be used for? As far as it, how much, if there's anything left over, or how do you quantify when you're all done, what, uh, what, uh, the results are?
Well, in the after-action report, we show what we've done and then, uh, what, what we the, we, it's called post-excavation samples, a- after we excavate and every, we do collect samples to show what's remaining. Uh, but we, in, in the after-action report, we don't make any land use recommendations or anything like that, that's, that's, that's decision for, for local and, and state government.
And so, just, sorry to.
I know you have one.
Last thing, sorry, to Chris X, this one, I'm going out on a limb. Is there a site we can see who requested the letter for the cleanup, who sent, who, who, you got a letter to come in and clean up? And I'm not sure who, I was wondering if there was a site or if you knew who sent the letter to act, to get this whole thing started, this whole cleanup started.
Yeah, the request came through Mass D E P.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, last thing, any visitors must check in at the command post, does that mean people can come visit, like? Or do they have to make an appointment through Adam, through you?
No, I, I, well, as far as coming on site, you definitely need to check in to make us aware that you're on site.
Yeah.
Uh, but for an active site, we don't do tours of, of, of the area. Uh, we, we need specialized trained folks working in the area, they need the forty-hour half-hour training. Uh, but if they wanna come on site and, and come to the, to the trailer, the command post, uh, to, to discuss something with me, that's, that's more than acceptable. Uh, but as far as going into the hot zone, that's.
No.
Unadvised.
Yeah, I'm losing the. Um, so is there a plan to, and this, I guess I had one more, is there a plan to notify the town if anything goes wrong during removal? Or is there a, or, you know, do you have a chain of command to notify Adam, do you notify the Board of Health? Do you go to the neighbor? How do you, if anything goes wrong, science is one thing, engineering's another, things go wrong with the engineering, the science is good, but it's a, you know, engineer the human.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what you're saying, as far as going wrong, but.
If anything happened on the site that would, that required immediate attention or that.
Bring all the rescue.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I don't know, I don't know what can go wrong in remediation. Escaped PCBs, who knows?
I mean, it's.
Matt, I do see your hand. Hang on.
You try and help, maybe answer. I mean, every site that we're at, we have a health and safety plan, you know, so if something goes wrong, you know, we know the evacuation routes, you know, where the closest hospital is. But, you know, as Wing pointed out, these are all trained professionals, you know, that do the excavation, you know, they know how to run the equipment, you know, we got exclusion zones where people aren't falling in pits or getting hit by an excavator and things of that nature, um. It's a soil job, it's not, it's not like cylinders and get, you know, containers that could explode, it's getting rid of contaminated soil.
Matt, do you have a question?
I have two, actually, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
First, Wing, thank you for, uh, thank you for coming forward this evening to, uh, present us a update on this. Um, we've heard about what's being done for soil remediation on the site, we've heard that the cement pad that's outside the building is being remediated, because that's where you're stockpiling the soil. We've heard nothing about the building, I'd like to know if there's any, if the building is within scope of the, uh, of this remediation action, if it's not, why? Uh, and then the second question is, um, after the completion of the remediation, remediation action, is there any plan um, after it to ensure that, uh, we, that whatever you have done has truly remediated the problem and that if there, if necessary, you would, you will return to, uh, if you find anything else to, uh, take care of it.
Yeah. And let's see if I can. So I guess the first part of your question is with respect to the building?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
The building is outside of scope, or, you know, we address things that release to the environment, this is a soil job. You know, whether brownfield, I don't know if it's included in the brownfields portion of the project or not, you could talk with Jim Byrne, who we work very closely with. Um, Adam, I don't know if, if you know if the building's included in, under the brownfields uh, cleanup and assessment grant or not, but I know it's not part of our program, we're not, we generally don't touch buildings, I mean, we don't do abatement, we don't do lead paint removal, we don't do asbestos abatement. Um, we're not an abatement program, our goal is to address the things that are getting out to the environment. So that's outside of scope. With respect to, when we're done, we're done and what, we'll remand the site back to Mass D E P for oversight and any sort of long-term monitoring. Um, you know, we're gonna have, uh, in, in our after-action report, you'll know, you know, how far we dug down, you know, what the data is below where we dug down, um, we'll have clean fill on top, we've broken the exposure pathway, there's no more direct contact threat with the PCB contaminated soil. So we've mitigated and done risk reduction out there. Um, anything longer term than that would be outside of the scope and you'd certainly talk with the, either Brownfields program or the state if there's a, if there's a thought that something further needed to be done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Tim.
Just a general comment. Fellow board members have raised some interesting questions and they're valid questions. Fellow board members also have to bear in mind, this board does not make an overall determination. We've already heard federal EPA is involved, Mass D E P pulled the trigger to start this process rolling. I'm sure our Board of Health is deeply involved, the Brownfields program is very heavily involved and I'm sure keeping an eye on this. Yes, this is wonderful, we're trying to get all the answers, but I think it's outside of our wheelhouse and our lane to try to dictate how this all comes together. Let's let the various agencies lateral and above us do their jobs.
I, I agree with you, Tim, um, I, I, the, the one aspect of that, where we get involved, a lot of people this, uh, this, this evening during citizen, uh, comment were like, we didn't know. Um, where's the, the gentleman that was like one of the last speaker? The, the fact that we're having this as an update or otherwise, and we've got a, a room full of people who want desperately to understand how did we get here, what do we, you know, what's going on now, what is the future or otherwise, ob- obviously future, we're gonna have um, a discussion about action plan or otherwise, but I, I do at least appreciate that we're doing this for the community. If it has lots of different components and you listed out all of them, even if this winds up becoming a clearinghouse where we, um, we, any updates or otherwise, I, I think this is a good thing to be able to at least allow people um, to hear what's going on, the extent of the problem and what is being done.
I absolutely agree with keeping everybody informed, but I, I want everybody in, in the audience, please understand this board is not the sole focal point, this is a broad breaching program. There are a number of agencies that have to work collaboratively and collectively. So yes, I understand there's been a vacuum and an absence of information, but it's not all on us as well. I mean, yes, we'll do our best to gather and collect it and disseminate it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks, Tim.
Yep. Mr. Chair, can I just bring up a point?
Yep.
Um, our job is to mitigate the environmental hazard, you know? We're not here to opine, offer an opinion on redevelopment, that's for the locals to do, so I just wanna be clear that, you know, it's I don't want there to be a perception that we're helping to influence the redevelopment of the site.
Right.
Our job is to work with brownfields and get rid of the environmental hazards that are hindering redevelopment. What that vision is, is the town's decision.
Thank you, thank you. Any other board? Yeah, I, I de- I definitely know there, there's some questions out there, any other board member comment, uh, questions? Got anything? Um, you've been waiting very patiently, thank you, sir.
I just wanted to know, well, Randy Camber, twenty-one Mill Street, Baldwin.
Thank you.
Um, is it the federal employees, government employees doing the cleanup or is it contracted out? Is our contract company, private company that's cleaning this?
Yeah, the, well, the federal government's overseeing the work, um, and this contractor's doing the, um, the physical work.
Okay, did you know the name of the company, Randy Camber?
Yes, it's Environmental Restoration.
Um, now are they, they the ones actually on the ground doing the cleanup or did they contract it out, someone win the bid and then they subbed it out?
No, they, they're on the ground doing the work, uh, but the way the contract's set up, they cannot do the transportation and disposal portion of the work, so they, they would need to subcontract that out.
So there's numerous hands. So there's numerous hands in this. Obviously, it's a big, big cleanup. And the only reason I'm asking that is because I have the EPA's agencies' removal action request, which came from that McValley LLC. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm not trying to stir the pot here, but is it normal for it to get a time critical action within two months? Is that like a normal thing? Like, hey, we have to clean this up quick?
Yes, that's the, that's our program, the emergency response program. It's the time critical removal actions. We usually move that quick.
All right. And then just so the residents are aware, number nine on this removal action request, it says the current property owner is financially unable to address the remediation needs currently on the property. But if you look up this name, they have a twenty million dollar
Can you hang on for one? Do you know the document that he's talking about? Yeah, so you're the only person, okay.
I have, if anybody would like to see it, let me talk to you. You're more than like
But if they're gonna ask questions, that's like if they don't, if they're not aware of the document, you know, they're not prepared to ask it, even if you handed it to them so they could at least see the letterhead or otherwise. Gentlemen, do the best you can, but we understand that you don't have, that you're not familiar with this document.
And like I said, this is more for the residents too.
Yep, I understand. You can proceed.
So either way, I have this and then they partnered with a twenty million dollar project with Queen Seas out of California. And coincidentally, on this EPA removal action request, another name comes up with the current owner besides Daniel McGlaughlin, which is McValley LLC, which is a Robert LaValle. McGlaughlin, LaValle, you put the two numbers, the names together, you get Mick Valley, which is who owns the property. You Google his name and environmental remediation and demolition comes up.
Okay, again.
I'm not calling anybody out. I'm just saying this is what I Googled on my phone. So whether it's at a town level, state level, federal level, somebody should be looking into this.
Do you have any, do you have any other questions?
That's it.
Okay. Ma'am, you had a question?
Yeah, Karen Baxter, seven Walnut Street. I don't know if I need. I'm
As long as we can hear you.
By speaking out, but this is, I I'm making a statement too. This has been done in two thousand four. Our properties on Walnut Street, all around that area were dug up. There were trees taken down. My property's never been the same. There were no ever any, anything as far as I know. Anything that was done for the wells or any of the water, waterways, we did, my husband and I did ask about that. They said that, like you said, they just did the sampling. But my question is, there's a huge, and I know this isn't a big deal, but there's a huge fence that went up and it says contaminated because our property goes abouts that. And all the trees that are there, was the sampling done on those trees? Are there any trees that are gonna be taken out? And is that, is that fencing gonna be taken down or? I don't know.
Believe that's out, I I see it. That's outside the scope. So anything related to that, you should refer the question to Mass DEP.
Okay, all right.
You know, that's completely outside of the scope of our cleanup.
Okay, thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Sir?
Rollback, just seven Walnut Street. I was telling, just made a point about you said it was an emergency response. You said two months is the time that you responded. They did the first thing in twenty two thousand and four. It's twenty twenty four. There's, there's a little more than two months in between that period of time. I'm not, I could be wrong, but
Well, they're completely separate removal actions.
But you take, you take twenty years to decide to remove again in two months.
Again, we get referred the sites from the state. We're not going out there hunting down sites. We respond to the state of Massachusetts asking us to take an action. We did that early action back in two thousand one, then we did the neighborhood action, and then we got a subsequent request. We're not going out there you know, hunting for sites if that's kind of
I I just don't understand. I just don't understand why it wasn't done right first. If you have to go back and read, if it was already decontaminated, did you guys put test holes up on the site you're at now in two thousand and four? To decontaminate it?
What did we do in two thousand and four?
That's
That was more
I think that's more the addressing the buildings.
And nobody checked the ground.
Well, that was over twenty years. I wasn't involved in that project.
I'm just saying, I just, it doesn't make sense where
Well, I think what you're getting at is if for that type of investigation, you could go to the pre-remedial program, see, does the site rank high enough? The list is a national priorities list site. Sir, we're doing a comprehensive investigation, which costs
Sir.
Takes a couple of years, several
Off the sidebars in the back. Please, just, I just, you can't have the sidebars. Go ahead, sir.
So all I'm saying is, is that, you know, we do a removal action. Under the statute, when we do a removal, generally the work for a time critical removal action needs to be done in under a year. It means it's not an emergency. But it's the the nature of the exposure requires a quick action, meaning less than a year. And so we did a removal, you know, we've done, we've had a number of sites where we're doing more than one removal action for different
Not interested in this site.
What's that?
I'm just interested in this site.
Yeah, so they're separate removal actions. I think you're asking, why aren't we doing a comprehensive? Because we weren't asked to do a comprehensive investigation. We gotta put limits on it. You ask, I mean, we don't do generally entire neighborhoods, you know, in our program. What's that? But I don't know if I answered your question. I mean,
No, I just, yeah, no, you didn't at all. You're saying that you took the buildings down, hey, because that was the, you meet, that was the first part of it?
Right.
And then twenty years later, you come back and then you test the ground. Is that standard procedure?
No, once we're done, we were No, the procedures, once we're done, the site goes back to the state for management.
Okay.
And then the state will manage it, and if they need further assistance, because it's beyond the resources of the state.
When we need space to stay
You gotta let him finish his answer. Okay? I I want it, I want it to stay civil, so if you let him finish his answer, then you can, then you can have a follow up question or all. Okay? Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you. You've answered everything, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may present for Mr. Baxter's understanding, we have, and it was in the packet, this one out electronically, and it was available on the town's website for item six D. This was an emergency request, time critical, submitted by Massachusetts DEP. The date of the submission was five eight twenty twenty four. The mobilization was seven eight twenty twenty four. There's your two month timeline. The start date was eight, six seventeen twenty twenty four. We're getting the reports of where we stand. I understand your question about two thousand four, and as was explained to you, this was handed over to the Mass DEP. Now, Mass DEP has had another reason to initiate a second request, and this is what these gentlemen are reporting back to us. I hope that clears it up a bit for you.
Sure.
You're, you're gonna go next, man. I think what we, what we're needing to do is we need to put together as far as a community, a comprehensive understanding of you can put your hand down, ma'am. You're not making me nervous. I'm just saying you can put your hand down. I know you're gonna go next. I I really feel like we need to put together like a more comprehensive understanding, yes. Understanding so that all of these questions can wind up getting addressed. So we can, if you want to connect dots or otherwise or understand the greater thing, we can do that. But right now, as Tim said, we're getting an update for this, and I, I mean, we're allowing the questions because people do have a lot of questions. But let, let, at least let right people to do the the work that still has to get done by December or otherwise. Ma'am, you can go and ask your question.
My name is Karissa Moore. I am the owner broker of K and G Realty Services, and to address your question about history.
Ma'am, do you have a question for the
No, the two thousand four was a separate project. In that timeframe from then to now, and the reason I know this is I sold this property for American Tissue Mills to the current buyers who have hired me to sell it now. Lucky you. That's what I know. They have no interest.
I, I know, I know. No, 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 no.
I have been communicating.
Stop.
I'm gonna say this.
You're not gonna say, you're not gonna say it. Ma'am, listen, we're gonna stay on topic with what we have.
This is topic.
It's not, you have an EPA.
This is topic.
Please do not try and talk over me.
The
I don't need, I've not asked for an update. You can show me your phone all you want.
The owners are offering to have a neighborhood in conjunction.
You are out of order.
And I think that speaks to why you're, where you are.
Enough. You were next. Do you have a question for the EPA gentleman?
And this gentleman, yeah. So my understanding was in two thousand, my name is Joe Goldberg, and my understanding was in two thousand four, we paid the committee and said the property had been cleaned. Is that wrong? That it was all
I would, I, it depends on the scope, you know, if the scope in the early action was to address the asbestos that was, wasn't there fires? Yeah, so to address the release of asbestos to the environment, we did that cleanup. We did not do a soil cleanup at that time, I don't believe. I don't know. I wasn't involved in that part in two thousand four, but I believe it was to stabilize the release of asbestos to the environment. Subsequent to that, Brownfields got a, you got a ground, the town got a Brownfields grant. And they've done some evaluation and they found that the contamination in the ground is beyond what the Brownfields program can address. So, you know, the state asked us to go out and do a further evaluation of the soil, which is what Wing is doing right now. You just mentioned, we got rid of, we're getting rid of four thousand cubic yards of contaminated so PCB contaminated soil and concrete that's contaminated. Once we're done out there, that will conclude this removal action. There could be groundwater issues, maybe not, but those are questions really for the state. The questions you're asking are about a comprehensive site wide investigation. And that is beyond the scope of what we do. We go after no releases to the environment, acute risk, imminent hazards, not these longer term environmental studies that are addressing more chronic and longer term exposure risks. For that, you either talk to the state, or if the state thinks it's beyond their ability to respond, they will talk to our pre-remedial folks to see if the site meets the criteria for listing as a national priorities list site. In those cases where it does, then we're doing what's called a comprehensive remedial investigation feasibility study, which often runs several million dollars in a few years to answer the question, because groundwater investigations are very complex. You know, you don't, it's trying, you're trying to assess what's in the ground. It takes time. And then the cleanups that are associated with those national priority list sites are often in the tens of millions to hundreds of millions of dollars. Think of New Bedford Harbor with PCBs, the Husatonic River out west of the mass with Pittsfield. Those are hundreds, and those are the types of sites that I'm talking about. If, you know, if it goes beyond the the resources of the state. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but, you know, in summation, we did an early action to address the building. Subsequent to that, Brownfields was doing some evaluation to see what needs to be done with the site to get it off the books and back into redevelopment. And and from that, they found additional contamination. Brownfields and the state came to us to act, ask us to evaluate the extended contamination of the soil, which is what Wing's done and which is what we're implementing right now. When we're done, we're gonna submit that after action report and we're done with the site. It goes back to the state. We are not a long term cleanup program.
Okay, one question. In nineteen ninety, there were vessels done. There are live wells done. Are those live wells still actively being tested? Have they been passed on?
I was still in college in nineteen ninety. I have no idea about the history of the site. You know, we, we respond to what's asked. You're asking questions that go outside of the scope of the request from Mass DEP. Again, those are questions that if you have, I would suggest going to Mass DEP.
So when you take on a site and you go back to the EPA or does EPA come to you and say, okay, in the past, we've had this issue and we have live wells that are still being actively tested? Or they're dormant? We've tested them and they're no longer showing traces of contaminants?
We're not, we don't do long term monitoring. Any sort of monitoring is with the state, you know.
EPA doesn't pass that on.
No, we don't, we do not, well, and this, the question is whether or not we were asked to do a groundwater investigation. In this case, the answer is no. So I would say that the groundwater investigation questions you have, again, have to go to Mass DEP.
So are you doing just asbestos or PCBs at this point?
We're doing PCBs and soil and concrete.
So then the testing live wells from nineteen ninety were showing that. So those are still active testing wells?
It's a different area.
I, I have no idea. Again, that's outside of the scope of our removal action.
All right, one, one last question. Did you find a file number, an active file number for what's being done today? Because it shouldn't be posted, I believe, on the property. I didn't see one.
We're gonna, yeah, we're just gonna keep it to the update that we're getting from the EPA this evening.
Well, so do you
I don't have it. No one else, these two gentlemen are providing the update. Any other documentation or anything else that was added to the meeting or tried to add to the meeting, that that's not within our purview. We don't have those documents. We're not passing those. Those are
I'm just asking if there's an active file number that should be posted, showing that that would be a
I don't, I can't speak for Mass DEP, but just knowing that program, if there was, they would have what they call an RTN, release tracking number. I don't know if there's any release tracking numbers associated
You can contact TA's office. We can get you that information. We'd be happy to. Yep. Bev, there are a couple other people that had their hands up before you.
One comment. They should be going to the Board of Health. The Board of Health has jurisdiction. Not these guys. Go to the Board of Health and ask your questions, and she can help you out.
Thanks, Bev.
Verability.
Mr. Chair.
I think it's a DEP question.
Do you have, you have a point?
I just have a point of order, and I would ask that everyone in the room, I would ask again, please keep the sidebar conversations minimal or non existent. It is hard to, it is hard to track the conversations that are going on, especially if you are participating over the Zoom platform.
All right, noted. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. Do you have
I was just going to say that I think the gentleman in that, and I'm not sure, I I could be totally wrong, but there's some suspicion in town as to why the EPA is here now after so many years checking the site and cleaning it up. You know, who notified the DEP that they, that someone requested this be done? In other words, didn't the family request that this be done? And why?
To be a good neighbor.
I, I, yep, I, I don't know that right now. I, I just, I don't, I don't, I can't answer this question. I'm sure Wing can't answer, or they've already given the answer that they were directed by the DEP.
Yeah, the when, when Brownfields program was doing their testing under the phase two assessment, they found high levels of PCBs at the surface. So they, they went back and told, and contacted Mass DEP as well. And that's when the request came in to our program, saying, hey, we found some high levels of PCBs at the surface. Is that something you can do for us?
Just to add to, we often do that. We partner with Brownfields a lot because the idea is that we wanna, you know, a municipality wants to save the Brownfields dollars to kind of really help with the redevelopment, and you can easily eat up a lot of money going after contaminated dirt.
Right.
You know, I think in the end, Wing, what was probably about three million dollars we're gonna be spending out there.
Yep. And I know that the report had an expenditure rate within the report that Tim was referring to. Julie, did you have your hand up?
I did. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Start, absolutely. It's, it's definitely your turn.
They were asking a question about who initiated the request. Can I respond to some information I know on that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Believe me, this, this is, this is not the end of the discussion or otherwise. For this evening, we're talking about what the update for the EPA is. I am certain that the conversation is going to continue a lot. Again, you know, Tim's, Tim and I is back and forth on the need to be able to provide a comprehensive understanding of it, what we're gonna do with it. To, to the extent of what the history lends itself to, but we're definitely gonna have a greater conversations. But for tonight, it's, it's about the update on how the EPA's remediation is going.
Thank you.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions for the EPA?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to thank Wing. Corinna is great with the town. I, I do appreciate the fact that the EPA is funding this cleanup. I think it's important that we take care of our environment, and I, I'm very thankful that the federal government stepped up and is doing this, because it's one make it a little bit closer to cleaning up that property over there. And I think Uh, because it's one, make it a little bit closer to cleaning up that property over there. And I think that's important. Uh, we all want to live in a safe, clean environment. So thank you and Wing, thanks for all your work.
Yeah, I mean, I echo it, um, what Adam is saying. You can see that the, 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 this, this property has uh been a blight. It's been a, a black eye in the community for quite a long time.
January nineteen ninety.
Absolutely, Gail. So you, the fact that you, you had a lot of people show up tonight with a lot of good questions, I, I think, I really, I really really appreciate you being able to offer that. All right, that, that's going to conclude it for the update from the EPA this evening. Uh, I, I appreciate everybody. It's not the end of the conversation. Uh, if you have questions or otherwise, um, you know, we talked about it in, in previous meetings, it's open communication. If you've got informa- where did he go?
He had to read.
Okay. You know, that, that, if, if you have information, if you have a file number that you want or otherwise, we're, we're available to answer these questions.
The Board of Health should answer, not you.
Understand, but if you ask questions, we can, we, we can pass it to the, the correct people to answer the questions, Bev. Okay, again, it's open communication. Um, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in person.
All right, folks, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. This is a discussion and possible action related to scout hall occupancy. Um, Matt will be leading the discussion on that. Um, Matt, we're just going to pause for a second. Um, that, that people are, uh, we're just going to let people. Yep. Good way of saying it, Gail.
And we thank everyone who attended for that conversation. It was, uh, we appreciate all the input.
I'm just going to ask them to take it, uh, take it outside.
Oh, John's got it.
It's the NCO in John.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Thank you.
Darren, I'll shut the door.
Okay. Thanks, Julie. I appreciate it. All right, Matt.
Can we also make sure that the open meeting sign is hung on the door if it's going to be closed, please?
Well, thank you.
Julie's got it. Okay, discussion of possible action scout hall occupancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board will, um, the board will notice that in their packet, there are five photographs of the interior of Scout Hall taken last week. And also a copy of the Scout Hall operating procedures that were previously proposed to this board in April of this year. And at that time, um, a motion was made and these uh operating procedures were defeated at that particular time. Um, these photos were presented to me um by the Scout Master of PAC twenty seven BS, uh, or Cub Scouts with the BSA. When the committee for the PAC was brought to Scout Hall or to see the building after its opening. And while we are thrilled that the building is open and available for use, um, I am concerned that the use of the building is being monopolized unfairly. In the procedures that we had originally de- uh defeated, there was controls in there for TCTV. And it is, in my opinion, that they got exactly what they wanted when this board defeated those procedures, that they got a blank, that they got an open door and ability to do whatever they wanted in the building. When the committee was brought into the building to look at it, the comments from the committee were that there was no way that a scout organization or a scout uh den at that time could go into that, that building and use it for meetings as it was currently presented. Some work has been done since then in order to improve it. But I am, having been there yesterday to sign up my boys for Cub Scouts, I am still concerned with the condition of the building that TCTV has again monopolized their use of it. There's a greater issue here. It's not just Scout Hall. It's that we do not have a building use policy in general. And that is a separate discussion. But at this time, it is my greatest concern that the people who are meant for the, to use the building primarily, which is the scouting organizations of our town, and it's not just the Cub Scouts, it's Scouts BSA, it's the Girl Scouts, any youth organization that wants to be able to use it right now cannot. At this time, having reviewed the Scout Hall operating procedures that we previously presented and believing that we should put an interim control in place until we can do a full building use policy for the town that would encompass Scout Hall and all the other buildings that we do have. At this time, I move that the board adopt the Scout Hall operating procedures and the chair to sign those procedures.
Matt, are you making a motion?
That was a motion.
Motion. Was there a second?
A second because I have questions.
What, the, the, the procedures that are in the packet, correct?
That is correct, as presented.
Uh, Terry, uh, second your motion. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, we're open for discussion at this time.
So, Mr. Chair, this just, this seems like it's been amended from the original one because the original one, I remember I had a problem with no cameras. This says, um, no alterations will be made to the building without approval of the select board and it gives examples. And cameras is in there, so it's a potential and it's, you know, I think this is, you know, better than the last one.
Okay. Um, ma- uh, so Matt, did you uh edit the last one? Is that what's? Okay.
I asked, I asked Adam Lamontagne to put in the packet the last version of what, whatever we, whatever we re- um, I don't want to say rejected, whatever uh was voted down in April.
Okay.
This is the latest version.
This is the latest.
So it's been edited from Adam's perspective. Yep. Okay.
So Matt, it's as this is, because it, yes, what I'm hearing is you asked for something, but we got something else, but we still have a motion on what we have.
It's as presented in the packet.
Okay.
I mean, the fact that we considered it before is almost not part of the discussion. It's more of Matt realizing that we've got an issue where the scouts are going in and seeing that the conditions, uh, when, I mean, we've all went in there, our, our, uh, our retreat was in there. Um, the pictures were virtually the same from what we saw it. So I, I would say, um, and, and Steve is here, the, the um Scout Master, I have that right?
Cub Master.
Cub Master is here for uh part of a discussion. Um, fix in, all right, Steve?
No sweat.
Okay, so I, I, I see three things.
Kind of order, aren't we going to be holding them?
I, I see that this does give, it at least helps us from a temporary perspective until Matt said, at our goal retreat, we said, we're going to come up with a, a consolidated policy for how town uh facilities are used and we're working on that. But it is in the interim to be able to at least have a a set of guidelines for how to use that specific uh multi-use building. Um, I see three things. I see a scheduling issue, um, which we could absolutely fix because we do have a, um, a scheduling feature within the town. It's my town government. Um, you know, you access or otherwise, uh, uh, obviously if it's a town entity, we, we know how to do scheduling to be able to de-conflict the space. Um, seems into the second thing. If I go in there, um, I do see TCTV peripherals um all over the building. Um, it's much, uh, some of them in the configuration, Steve, you did describe when you are filming, how you would have backdrops or otherwise. Those cannot be present in the rest of the hall when you're not filming. They actually, they, they're in the way. And if they are, um, if they're affixed to the wall or otherwise, if it wasn't approved by the, the, um, by uh public works, uh, by um buildings and grounds, then you know, that's an issue as well. Those things need to get put away. And then the final thing that I see, um, there's a bookshelf in terms of liability or otherwise, there are bookshelves that are outward facing that I believe, is that your personal property that's in the, the bookshelves? But like the trinkets and uh like all uh items are on the bookshelf?
Yeah, they're donated.
I, I, that's a problem for me to be able, as, as far as like a liability for your stuff. You know, I'm not saying that the scouts are going to start pilfering or throwing stuff around or otherwise, but the, the temptation is there because they're sitting there. So I would just turn the bookshelves around. That, that area, um, I, it meets the mission, like even if you have someone working in that area while a meeting's going on, that's not, that's not going to affect. If you start to film or otherwise, it's a, it's a schedule deconfliction. If you need to pull out backdrops and things like that, you got to pull them out of storage or pull them out of your area to be able to do that. This is completely fixable. The, um, you know, I, I agree with Matt, if we put something on paper that we have an interim solution to be able to move forward to say, this is what TC, this is the footprint that TCTV has, this is the scheduling that we're going to make sure that we're de-conflicting the space. I, I see that as still meeting the mission for the scouts and still supporting what uh the studio operations that you want to uh, want to achieve. Those are the three things that I'm thinking of.
And I would also like to add.
I, I'm, I'm supportive of the, the operating procedures. So I'm going to go through the board first.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to add that when, when we come up with a comprehensive building use policy, it would be the intention that that would supersede this policy and that this would be repealed at that time.
Or, or as a, as a, um, an appendix, however we want to be.
Either way.
Yep, I agree. We just can't, we can't go forward with how, how it's laid out right now. We've got to have that, that, those changes. Um, Jeff or Tim?
Well, I go back to the town meeting vote back in May of two thousand sixteen and the town meeting vote was for that building to be used as a municipal youth and community center. So that tells me that any entity that wants to use that building can use it. But we have here specifically TCTV and the scouts will be responsible to maintain a clean building. So if I want to have something and I have something in that building, what do I just, wow, TCTV can clean it up? You're not covering all the things. And I look back at the study that was done of all town buildings and parks and so forth uh back in two thousand and three to assess them. There's only about the report is three to four, maybe five parking spots there. So in December of two thousand twenty, we had a self-evaluation and Scout Hall has limited parking and there needs to be an accessible parking space there per the law. It has to be if you're only, and there's only a number, there's only four or five spaces there. Uh, you saw at the meeting we had, police officer came in and thought two people had to move their cars because they were parking over the apartment building or wherever. Um, and I believe that's the only legal right of way entrance to that little area coming from the churches. You can say the guy's nice and they don't bother you or anything, uh, but I don't believe there's a legal right of way coming in from that other end. So my concern is parking and ADA compliant parking, you know, I don't know how that building is open and why it hasn't been addressed since this was discovered in, again, first in two thousand and three and then again in two thousand twenty. And then there is the uh, the issue of somebody wants to go to the Amadon Park, that monument. ADA to get to that and where are they going to park? It's I think we started something and it, it went down one path and now it's going down another. I, I go by and I, back and I looked at all the uh, the votes, the discussion with the board and there's no procedures and how it's going to get in the building. It was talk about sharing the building and using it for this or that, but there was never this until all of a sudden the building is complete and now rules come out of almost nowhere. I, I'm concerned about the parking and the, the liability for that. And that's including paving the lot because it has to be a smooth surface. Somebody in a wheelchair or walker or cane or anything. It's ADA compliant. And I believe we've done enough work on the building and modifications that you got to have that parking taken care of before you can open that building to use. And the other thing I see is why are we not mandating security cameras inside there? Expensive equipment. If there's going to be multiple parties in and out of there, it's a town owned building. We need to be able to see what's going on in there. You, you know, you, you talked about the bookcase, this, that. They have a meeting in there and something is broke. I didn't do it. Um, I don't think we did it. You just have security cameras. And it's, I don't know how many places you can go nowadays that don't have security cameras inside a building, just general building there. And I think they need to be there for a multitude of reasons. I don't know why anybody would be against it. It's, it's a meeting building. It's a public building. It's not like, you know, it's somebody's home that you're going to put them in. So, um, I just have issues with the way this came about and, and how they're aimed. When all along the line, it's been talked about and even CPC was, you know, they support the project because it involves TCTV. I don't know how much real meetings or things you can have there because of the limited parking. So that's my concerns is, you know, with TCTV and stuff, it's almost like a, like a radio station, not a lot of people going in and out. Uh, I could be wrong, but I just, again, the ADA parking, I think the security cameras and this seems to just say scouts and TCTV, but what about? I mean, it says further, anybody who's going to use the building has to get a Cory check. So that indicates to me, there's more than just scouts TCTV using it. So, uh.
So, if, could I ask you a question? Um, and in terms of occupancy and pet parking spaces in the level service or otherwise, what, what, what would be your recommendation or is that a question for development services to be able to say how did we get to that occupancy permit? And, you know, I know that we've talked about, you know, this is a parking lot here and I, you know, I don't know if it's like a three hundred yards.
And, and one other thing I'll just throw out there. This is a town owned building. And it seemed that we're going to do a temporary set of rules for that building, but if you just look at EDIC and accept that, okay, just if, I don't think it's been done complete yet, the process, but if you just say, yep, it's been done, it's every, all the steps have been done. That's a legal separate corporation of the town and they're using this, this space and we don't have any rules for them.
Okay.
Why don't we make a set, separate set of rules, a temporary set of rules to use this building?
We, we are, we are doing that. We're coming up with an overall uh town use.
Right. So why do we have to put this in place for that building?
Right in front of us. We already have, TCTV is already occupying the space. Scouts already, as Matt had said, they've already had um a uh town property use permit uh approved and they've already had their, um, their signups for it.
So if they already have the approved use form to use it, then it doesn't seem like you need a temporary set of rules. Then it doesn't seem like you need a temporary set of rules.
No, they've come and said that we, that they can't use it just because of the conditions within the building. That's what we're trying to do. That's the main thing that Matt, again, Matt, you brought this. Uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take over your uh, your agenda item, but you know. The, the space isn't, this. The idea is that they're supposed to both use it, but the scouts are saying we can't use it. Given that the TCTV has uh, gone over their footprint. Um, that we could have had codified. And again, I'm stealing Matt's thunder here. That we could have codified to say, you, the second page, it's the, well, you don't have it right there.
Not only did we, not only could we have codified, we attempted to codify.
Yeah.
Again, it was defeated. It was back in April. Jeff, you were not on the board at that time. Okay, so it, this is not new to the members of the board who were at that time, which is in this case, everybody but Jeff. Um, so again, it's. In my mind, there is an immediate need here. And that's why I'm, that's why I'm presenting this as a temporary solution. Okay, do we absolutely need a town building use policy that covers Scout Hall and everything else? Yes. But for the moment, we have an immediate need. In my mind, we have an immediate need. And that's why this is being presented this evening because it helps to address an immediate need.
What are the scouts doing that they can't go into that building? I mean, is there a free frog going on? Are they going in and uh, sit at a table and, and, and make stuff or?
Mr. Chair, I think at this time, it would be a wonderful time to defer it to Mr. Kaplis. And Mr. uh, and Mr. Russo, who is the chairman of the PAC committee.
Mr. Chip, John Caps, I am the Cub Master for here, PAC twenty-seven here in Templeton. I am with the committee chair, uh, Jim Russo. Uh, the bottom line is, I mean, I, when we first, like you, like I indicated, when we first went into the building. To identify, you know, the, the space for the, for the Cubs, for the Cubbies to use. Uh, and I'll answer your question here in a second, Jeff. Um, you know, it's. This is, it's a building with on, on, ongoing uh, construction since two thousand sixteen and. When it was finally done and, and I remember last year telling the, telling the scouts that, hey, we're gonna be able to potentially use this building. As another site to try to get some of these uh, dens out of the residence, residence homes and. And bring them into locations such as Scout Hall or Holy Cross Church and First Church, et cetera, the other locations that we do use here in town. Uh, when we first went in, I took the committee chair and the committee, uh, all the members to look at the hall. Um, and as you saw the pictures, that's how it was. Now, I gotta give Steve kudos because obviously, uh, he did reach out, but I think it was the next day, which was Monday, which I didn't get back to him until like a couple of days later because I was. Still overwhelmed by the, the fact that, I mean, I didn't realize it was gonna be uh, you know, it was uh, the homestead for um, that TCTV. I, I didn't realize it was like his office and that's his day to the operation was gonna be set out of there. I didn't realize that. Um, uh, shame on me. You know, I mean, what we do as Cub Scouts, I mean, obviously. It's not big enough for a, a PAC meeting, which we're about thirty plus strong. Uh, we use Holy Cross Church for that. But for den meetings, which are about five to six Cubbies strong, uh, or sometimes maybe, maybe two dens, which will be maybe twelve kids. We have potentially, uh, we have two set tables up and they do activities, sometimes crafts, some other activities that they do with, you know, paint and markers and crayons and stuff like that. Uh, we do do some fun activities. Uh, we also do physical fitness. Uh, so the, the, the open room would be great for like doing, you know, physical fitness events, you know, sit reaches, push-ups, sit-ups, that type of stuff. Um, and we could also use outside of the grass, which is a small little grassy patches, but it's still enough for us to use. Uh, as well. As far as parking, I mean, we're, we're already looking at about six or seven, maybe seven cars probably potentially. Um, which we, really close. But at the end of the day, uh, when we first walked in there. Um, like I said, the entire footprint was, was TCTV. Um, I did talk to Steve and we did try to litigate some of the issues, but again, you know, as. Leaders that we are, we do do risk assessments and risk analysis for these kids. So we wanna make sure nothing happens. You know, workplaces don't fall over or nothing's get broken. Um, and to digress back, I did fill out the form for the request, uh, which really has no bearing on the building. It's really for like. Like, uh, the Templeton Center. It's like if I'm having food or venues and stuff like that. It really wasn't developed for the use of a building. Uh, I did the best I can with the form. Uh, it was approved by, by Adam, which was great. Uh, we did bring the insurance writer in from, from council. And we did provide that. Uh, we also, I also provided a letter from, from me, it, it, like what we were looking for. Uh, which was two twelve-foot tables at this, well, the eight-foot tables, uh, with about ten to twenty chairs. Uh, and potentially some type of storage locker that we can, you know, shut and potentially lock. Uh, for arts and crafts and stuff that we can store at Scout Hall for the use when we're there. Uh, but when we got there, obviously it caught us by, by surprise. Uh, and then after talking to Steve, I mean, obviously he, you know, litigated some things, some other things since yesterday. Uh, which I haven't got a chance to talk to Steve yet, but um. When we got there yesterday, again, two eight-foot tables, we brought ten chairs, uh, and a small six-foot table. Uh, that we had on the front, in the foyer area for uh, people coming in and out, so I can check them in, check them out type of deal. Um, obviously not, not, at that point, nothing was moved. Obviously, everything was still the same as you saw in the pictures. So. Uh, the staff that was, yeah, there was two staff members there from TCTV. They did help move the stuff, which was great. Um, and they did offer to help us as well. And we, I had enough staff to help me, so I wasn't really, I didn't use their, his staff. Um, and then we tried to help at the end, you know, pick it up, taking the tables down. Uh, we did storm against the wall, uh, because we're gonna be back there tomorrow night because it was a big opening for, for, you know, for Scout Hall and for the youth attempting to be back in that building. Um. What, what caught, what caught me off guard was I felt like a, like a, like a tenant, like I was, I was a tenant. Um, because there was a staff member that stayed the entire time, uh, until I left. And then obviously that person locked up after I left, which I don't know if that's TCTV's policy. I'm not, I'm not sure. But I just, I mean, that person stayed the entire duration that we were there. Um, so I'm not sure how this is, not that I need to be left alone or, or wanna be left alone. I mean. Didn't see the care there, but uh, you know, it's okay, like we're just like the, we were the tenants and we were. It wasn't from the town. It was from use of, you know, you know, Steve's building.
Anyone have any questions for, for John?
I don't have a question. I have a few comments and this will, this will address some of the things John spoke to and some of the things that Jeff spoke to and. I wish the TA hadn't stepped out of the room because my first question is.
He's putting the air conditioning on for some.
Oh, thank God.
It's not a hot flash, but you know. Thank you, Adam. I appreciate you.
Adam, I did have a question. What we have in front of us, you said this is the current version?
The latest.
The latest version is, is this the one we defeated in April?
No.
Or is this a change?
I believe that was the one that's defeated.
This.
In April.
This says.
It's similar. I don't think it's the same one.
It isn't because it says the select board can vote to have security cameras and the one that was in April said no cameras and I. Asked why I brought that.
I assumed that there were edits in this.
Yeah.
Yep. And, and I'm asking the question because if rewind the tapes a little bit to April and we do have to look at the, the history here. In fact, we could take the history way back to two thousand sixteen when John was the chair and the scouts were evicted from Scout Hall as the building was closed down. I was the assistant Cub Master here in town. I had a den that I was responsible for. My boys started off eleven strong. And we were slowly displaced out of the building where council on aging took over and then we brought in the mark driver and then we brought in the scheduler. And then we brought in the meals on wheels coordinator and we got pushed right out the door. And then the building was shut down. To Jeff's question on parking, there was one handicap spot. With a spot in front and behind immediately in front of the Amadon Park. When the church was an active church, it was never a big deal. We were always allowed to park there. When it was the secondhand store. The owners were quite adamant and we got into quite the Donnybrook one night because we were there on a Saturday. Taking a trip up to Manchester, New Hampshire for a scouting event. We parked four vehicles piled as many into pickup trucks, Suburbans, et cetera. But they were like kicking us off the property. So again, it was a Saturday. Our solution was let's go park at Town Hall. I don't think anybody's gonna scream at us. And we did that. And, and we, we got through it. But it, it worked out. But there's just so many other pieces. And then the other question I have directly for John, the guide to safe scouting is still in effect.
Yes.
Anybody involved with the scouts? Now, there's too deep leadership, I'm sure. So even with TCTV there, that's not an issue. But in the event, there's only one leader in TCTV's there. They do still have to be vetted through the BSA and go through the entire process. Which is another Cory check outside of the town because BSA is very strict and Holy Cross Church is your sponsor.
That's correct.
Is also going to require through the Archdiocese of Worcester. I, I'm fully aware of this. My many, many years. Wearing another hat as the commissioner. Where I worked with the units and then eventually twenty-six unit in the district and then fifty-four in the entire. Uh, council as the explorer co-commissioner. So I, I do understand this program very intently. I would love to see our scouts get back in there, but I have to agree with John's assessment. Right now, it doesn't work.
No, I, I mean, and, and you know, I gotta give Steve his credit. I mean, he did try to, uh, you know. Put some things in place, moving some things around and stuff like that. I, I, I think that's great. But I think at the end of the day, I mean, I'm still. It's still a, um. I don't wanna use the word liability, but it's definitely, there's still some, some concerns. Um. You know, I mean, because obviously when I, when this first all started back in two thousand sixteen, the whole intention was. Then again, again, TCTV had, had a hand in it the entire duration, but we were in the impression they were gonna have. You know, storage facilities and storage lockers and stuff to store their equipment and, and their, and their. Whatever, all their equipment. Um, I didn't realize it was gonna be a studio, but uh, but again, that's. After my time, so I can either confirm it. I don't know what happened with that. I don't know. And at this point, I really, it does, I don't care. What I care about right now is to be able to use that building for the scouts. And as it is, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna have another sign-up date tomorrow. Um, and we're gonna be there from five to about seven, seven fifteen. Um, I will see where things are at that point. If not, then I'll, I'll, I'll be. Taking my tables and chairs, bringing it back to Holy Cross Church and I will be withdrawing my application for utilization of Scout Hall. Uh, because it's just not conducive at this point. Um, even with this stuff put away, his laptop tables put away. Um, it's just, it, it's, that's, that's his workstations. I mean, that, that's his working facility. So I mean, it's not, it's almost like I'm. These were in, 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 but I'm like approaching on his, his turf. I don't wanna feel like I'm like.
In layman's terms, it's not kid-proof?
It's definitely not kid-proof. I mean, we're true with the best we can. He has his ability to like drop screens and move things around and stuff like that. And the kid's not gonna be running around like a muck, but I mean, we're talking kindergarten here. We're talking first grade, second, third grade, fourth grade kids. So we're not talking like. You know, voice ghosts, but I mean, but they're not gonna be throwing things around either. We, there's parents with these kids. Uh, there's too deep, plus three deep leadership we have.
Yep.
Plenty of people to, to manage what we have. Uh, we're not talking large crowds. We're talking six people at best. Um, at a, you know, per meeting, per den meeting. Um, and I.
Yes, I, I, I think, so the good news is. Um, you know, we're saying TCTV, but what we're really meaning is it's dedicated municipal space. Uh, you know, so if I'm kind, I wanna, I wanna take the temperature down in terms of like, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to direct to Steve. Remember, TCTV and, and Steve, that's a department of the town. Adam can direct that, that department to be, to do whatever. So I, we're gonna have some traction tonight. We're gonna be able to fix some of the, the issues tonight. As far as a policy goes, I, I, I would say to make it, um, you know, I, I've listened to all the different comments. Um, you know, you specifying TCTV, I think we remove TCTV from the, um. Uh, from the, the operating procedures and just call it dedicated municipal space. Cause it could be anything.
Yep.
If we say that twenty-five percent, because that's what it says in there, is that space that, that where he's occupied. Um, workstations, studio, equipment, not the headquarters for TCTV. I, I understand that it feels like that, but basically saying that is dedicated municipal space for, for, uh, for Scout Hall. We, we've gotta add in something for parking because uh, I, I think that we do need to be able to address it, go back to development services and say. What are we gonna do here? Um, we've got uneven ground or otherwise, but that, that's really. Coming out of this situation, but I, I, I agree with Jeff that we do need to address that. But I think also if we're gonna have operating procedures, we need to say there are, there are only this many spaces. Any other parking considerations, other, uh, you know, other actions need to be taken. I don't think that's a bad one. I know that, that means you're walking down two A, but there are spaces here for Town Hall. But we, we, we can't call it another situation. There's only five, is it five? Five spaces.
It says.
We, we can't ignore that. We can't ignore that fact. So it should be in there to say there are five spaces to use and then we will need to figure it out. Fixtures for, I, I would also say fixtures need to be addressed in here because whether it's your tables. Or whether it's municipal fixtures, they need to be, um, stowed after use. So that it returns it to the space that we, we're expecting when we walk in the door. So if we're scheduling on my town government and, and you, and you know, Cubs, Cub meeting. You should understand when you walk in there with your, uh, with, you know, your adults and, and everyone else, the space that you have. Should be what you expect. When TCTV is going to do operations and they were, they are gonna be on the scheduling as well, whether they're, they're taping. Wh- whatever they're, they're doing, they're on that schedule and they should have that expectations when they're using it during their schedule time. They're gonna pull out the fixtures and set up the studio and otherwise. Um, Steve did a good job at least explaining that aspect of when they're actually performing. But we should specify that. That, so that's like three amendments. Just alone in this, where I think it becomes a little bit more of a, an effective document if we're trying to use this document and from a temporary perspective.
I think if I can, if I may, Mr. Chair.
I, I did have, um, I did have three, three hands up. One of, one of them was with you. Now you're number four. But I, I, I always try and reserve, uh, if the, if the board has a comment or otherwise. Did you wanna add something in?
If I may through the chair, can I defer this to Mr. Zosik from Buildings and Grounds? Bob, correct me if I'm wrong. The property line is about three feet. To the right on the rotary side of the handicap access ramp. And then that's where it stops. It becomes the apartment of the proper, the apartment building.
Correct.
So that, that's, that contributes more to the parking dilemma.
Well, I was gonna suggest, uh, Tim was, any outside pavement, the town should have that survey. Identify Templeton's property before we just pave it. Because it is close to the apartment. And I don't know if anybody reached out to the electrician that's occupying the church, but he seems like he's real flexible. I think you should try approaching him. I think you'll. Get permission to park, even if you offer him that when we go through to keep it over for plow, we'll. Plow across and help him out a little bit. But I think it'll be a.
Okay.
Very good, even a handshake and allow you some spaces.
Right, sir.
Uh, yes, uh, so as John introduced me, I'm James Russo, I'm the PAC committee chairman. Um, just to give you a little scope, if this is okay, just give a scope of what I do. I'm responsible for the unit. The, this, not only just, you know, the safety of it, but also to your point, Mr. Toe, the. Parents, you know, leaders are all given the training that they need and Cory checks on and so forth. And John has, uh, done a tremendous job reporting to our committee about the evolution of this project with Scout Hall. And getting our scouting unit involved in it. Once again, like it, once, what's used. To kind of think about our program a little bit, you always have to think of a school setting. And we just had open house. So I was recently at the school and I took a look around at IT equipment that is in classroom. And I noticed that like there's a lockable storage thing for iPads or tablets or whatnot. And, you know, things are. Tend to try to keep out of reach for kids and. We have to almost kind of think of Scout Hall in that same sense. So, you know, den leaders and they are very well trained and we're very, very blessed to have the ones that we have. Um, they do a tremendous job, but still it's, it could be some distraction and then it could be, you know, you take your. Eye off a kid for just a moment and their hands could be on some of this very valuable. Equipment that we certainly don't wanna see damaged. And, but we are, you know, it's the question of where's liability? And to Mr. Bennett's concern, now we use a lot of spaces, uh, throughout the community, which. Templeton is a strong supporter of our Cub, Cub Scouts and, uh, older scout programs that run in this town. And we're getting very blessed. But like in the places and spaces that we use, there's usually a sign in and sign out. And usually how that is all interpreted by these, uh, community spaces is that. You are responsible in that time that you reserved there and the time between when you checked in and when you checked out. So a lot of these places don't have cameras and we largely don't have issues. Because we do have an honor system and we do have checks and balances so that if any property was damaged, which. There has been some occurrences, I'm gonna be completely honest with you, but we were able to narrow down things because. There was a sign in and sign out and we knew what and what's not, you know, the scout's time that was using that space. So again, and I'm not gonna go too much more because John did an absolutely fantastic job in, um, what he said.
Thank you for that perspective. Uh, Julie.
You know, I, I just wanna say that. Back in two thousand and fifteen, that building was talked about on your board. In regard to picking it up, moving it over here, leaving it there, doing a controlled burn, all these other things. I took the time and the energy to look it up. I took the time and the energy to look it up. It was the first schoolhouse for our presence, the first one. It is historical. When I was voted on to the board and that discussion of Scout Hall. It's parking, moving it, burning it, whatnot came up. I offered to take on the project and see if we could bring it to the townspeople. To restore it. For our scouts. It passed with the townspeople. T C T V has full reign. I didn't look at it. I trusted that T C T V was gonna be monitored by this town. When they were offered to go in there. And yes, Steve was a part of cleaning that building up. Twenty five percent. Need a cabinet with a lock, need a little stage area, couple of chairs. I was also sent pictures devastated. You cannot use utilize something that went in front of your townspeople. To be restored for the scouts of our town. So I'm here to support the scouts, one hundred and ten percent.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Liz, then Steve.
So the the building.
And Steve, if you wanna come up to the microphone.
To to Julie's point, it is a youth, a primarily a youth building. Um, I, you know, everything that Steve and his crew have done within the building. You know, it looks very pretty, it is very nice, and I walked in there and went. Oh, my God, this is not going to work. My son was part of the scouts that was kicked out of the building thanks to see. Thanks to the Council on Aging. We've been around this already. And and I realize he, Steve means well. But that building is primarily, even though it's a municipal building, primarily for the youth. And in essence, what has happened, it has been the reverse is what is going on for for. For John to sit over here going, we're not gonna use the building. I'm sorry. That is again, the youth being kicked out of their building. That is unacceptable. And for for anybody, yes, I am very adamant about this and yes, I'm yelling because so everybody can hear me. Right, is anything less than being primarily a youth building. It goes against town meeting vote. It goes against when the building was originally uh donated to this town and. They have the right first. Anybody else coming into that building that's non, that is not a youth related organization is second. And for the board to even consider anything else, it is disgraceful. Thank you.
Yep, that that well, that's not what was on the table for di- different consideration. What we're trying to do is mediate a a solution. M- Mr. Capitalist, do you think that we are able to mediate a solution?
I think so. I think at the end of the day, I think what we should think about is, me. Obviously, I think at this juncture, I mean, to have the kids in that building is probably not gonna be the best choice right now. I think until we come up with a policy in place. That's gonna negate like all the issues that he had to include parking, the hot top. Uh, the handicap parking and all the, all those litigations, I think.
I understand.
Happens. I think that maybe we can, could, could, we can come back to the table and say, okay, maybe we can, we can revisit this, but. As it is like right now today with the parking, with the way the hot top is, the uneven ground, there's the no handicap situation. Uh, and then obviously, I I think. Which is not gonna kill us, but I mean, it's just puts us.
Well, let's work together. We're gonna work together to figure out a a way forward to make sure that it is, it is usable and that we, a- again. I I I'm gonna ask the T A to to go to development services and say, what what are we going to do here? You know, I know that there's an occupancy permit was issued and otherwise, but let's take a look and see what we. And and we need to find the resources to be able to do it. I know that we've already used a lot of resources, C P C and otherwise, but let's see what we can do. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, everybody.
John, I think we can work together.
To find solutions. I thought we had addressed many of your concerns last week.
We did.
When we met, or whenever it is, I can't even keep track. But I wanna clear up a few things. First of all, any implications that T C T V is stealing Scout Hall from the scouts is false. We are not about doing that. If you are hearing that in the community, and I've heard it, it is false. You have been misinformed with falsehoods. We have always wanted to work with the scouts from day one in the building. T C T V started this project as a place that we could have a home because we need one. And John, you were the first guy I called. You want the scouts in there? Yep, let's work together. All right, so that's what we're trying to do. We went to C P C. This was the original proposal to C to C P C. I got a kind of kick out of it. Just read you a couple of the things in here. This is in April two thousand and sixteen and. C P C Community Preservation Commission would only approve the project if T C T V had a home there. First of all, that's another fact. Scout Hall as a youth center addresses the need for a place for youth to gather, to study, play games, et cetera. As a meeting place, it addresses a need for a place for community organizations and clubs to gather. As a casual TV studio, it provides T C T V with a public face and many organizations access to it. This could also work in conjunction with a multimedia lab, which we're now calling a digital lab, and internships with the school, which we do as well. The Select Board has unanimously approved moving forward with the renovation project and it enthusiastically endorsed the multi-use plan for Scout Hall. This also has support from Veteran Services, Lions Club, T C T V, Cub Scouts, and an arrogant city historical society. Not much has changed really, except no one has changed. The layout has changed, right? This was the original layout. That was approved by the Scout Hall Reuse Committee. We approved this. Right, and actually. This is very messy. Um, it looks crowded, but this is what it is today. There's actually more room all in here, all in here for the scouts. Because we eliminated this entertainment area, we incorporated that into our shelf and backdrop here that is within this quadrant. The only things we have out, we always said we'd buy a conference table, that's there. And we have a work desk against the wall um in the front room. And that could be cleared of computers when the scouts are in. That's no problem. All right, and you can use that table if you want.
I don't think it was an issue.
Yeah, and you know, the big shelf, the big library shelf that we took from the library attic. Um, and restore, we're trying to find out who built it because it's beautiful. It's anchored to the floor. It's not going anywhere. And if we're concerned about kids touching it or running into it, we have the acoustic baffles, which you saw in the middle of the floor, and I'm sorry those were left out. We were just experimenting. There's six foot baffles and you can just move them around anywhere. We actually keep them. Um, well, I won't get into it, but I showed John, we could put that right up against the shelf, drop the background on it and you have a big black square. And you, a kid could run into it and nothing's gonna happen. So we can address that as well. And um, I don't think we really have anything else in the area except for the backdrops. Which, you know, I like to have the backdrops out because I want my crew to be able to use them. And they get wrinkled if they're stored, right? They need to be steamed and and the wrinkles taken out. And what that actually creates is a little storage area back there. You may have seen it. And that's a place where you could put your tables, the boxes that you have if you wanna store them, and they tell, we'll share that space. We'll make it work. So I just want everyone to know that we're not stealing Scout Hall. Or anything. We wanna work with the scouts. We want kids there. I wanna see kids get off of that bus and come in there. And do their homework while we're sitting there working or play a board game or do something. So Liz, to your point, yeah, it's for the youth. It's always been, but it was, it was. Approved as a community, our youth and community center, and that's where we're achieving. We're there for a reason. All right, we do news. Do you, do you know there's a crisis in news? We all wanna be informed. We're trying to do local news. There's a book over there I have, what works in local news. You know what the common denominator is? Engagement with your community. That's what we wanna be. We wanna be there with other groups that wanna be, and. The district scout leader wants to partner with us on an exploring program hands on. There are merit badges for scouts all over that building that we can help with, and we want to do that. Now, we're not trying to take it over. Right, but we need space too, right? We're gonna, we work in the whole building. We don't just stay in the little back room. Right, we may have one person working there, another person working in.
It's gotta, it's gotta, it's gotta be deconflicted.
Yep, I think we just did.
Um, not the way that you described it. You, you, you're not gonna, it, it, it was going to be very clunky. Trying to move around together. You aren't gonna be able to. Do all of the the studio stuff that you're doing while he, while the Cubs are trying to.
I never, I never thought that we would do that, Mike. And you know what?
That's my point. We need to work.
Schedule these things. Remember, we scheduled meetings all during COVID, a hundred and fifty of them a year. We had meetings virtually every week.
I know.
Right?
You have, you have a different footprint. That you have, you have a, a, that, that's another thing that you, that we've got to understand is that T C C T V doesn't have just a Scout Hall footprint. You have a footprint and you've got, uh, I don't even know what your footprint is. I know it's uh several different areas.
Empire closets.
Yeah.
One there.
But you gotta, you're gonna have to make that work. It's, the, the. Scout Hall is not gonna be the end answer for all, all, all of your problems. For the space that you want. That, that studio space, we've got to be able to define it and it has to be. It has to be concrete so that, like, I wanna say it again, when, when the Cubs walk in. That expectation of the space is is not a variable, it's a constant. When they go in there, they know exactly how they're going.
Exactly how we'll keep it for you. We know, but, excuse me, can I, can I talk? Well, we know. That you're coming in there, our stuff will be gone. Now, I would like to keep the backdrops.
I see you, Matt. I see.
So you have storage space as well. That's all I'm saying.
Yep, of course.
Mr. Castle, when I was in that building yesterday afternoon, if you, if the board would like to look at picture number two in their packets. Behind those backdrops that are currently in that picture, there was microphones. There was what looked like a teleprompter. All equipment that you were using for video, that you would use for production, that were stored out in the middle of a room. That would be used for scouts. Is that something you really want to store in that space if there are going to be scouts in that space, Mr. Castle?
Actually, actually, Matt, that's not true. Um, it's not in the middle of the room. It's behind a backdrop. That takes up a few feet off of the wall.
It's still taking up space.
Well, if you really want them, we'll, we'll stick them in the back while we're there and, you know, it's get, gets crowded. There's a storage problem at Scout Hall already, and I have storage elsewhere. We have.
Use your network of closets.
Please, please let me finish.
Okay.
We, we, we are trying to bring into Scout Hall only what we need there. All right, we have what we need here, here. All right, I can't be running back and forth for a connector or something like that. So yeah, Matt, there are, there were microphone stands out there. We can put them away. You know, i- if you want, but again, you have storage space there too that you can use, so. What are we talking about here? We can work this out. It seems like, it seems like I'm trying to work it out and you're trying not to work it out.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I do wanna, I wanna move the discussion along rather than. Yep.
This is my last comment. The other comment that I have here too is that. It is in my opinion that when the scouts are in that building, T C T is not. And I understand, Steve, that that is your, that, that you have to use that as your home base of operations. But if the scouts are gonna be in that building, T C T V should not be cooccupying that building at the same time. The building should be at that time available for the scouts, youth organizations, whatever, to use. With the, with the understanding that they will not go into your designated area in that back corner. We understand that. But at that time, T C T V vacates. And there will not be co, in my mind, there should not be co, the co occupancy of that building.
So I would say if you really want that. Um.
I, I.
No, I lost my turn of thought.
Um, I, I definitely wanna, I wanna move, uh, you know, as they say at town meeting, move the question. I just wanna be able to move the discussion along because it's been a lot of valid points. Mammy wanted to add something.
Well, that was a concern of mine as well, what you mentioned. Oh, Cassandra Calderon, um. At thirty eight Turner Street, I'm also a Cub leader. Um. You know, I think that what's being glossed, one of the main concerns for me is that, as it's been mentioned multiple times, Cub Scout. And leaders, we all go through particular training in order to be around these children. I think that when we're in a setting like that. Um, that I do feel like it's a little bit odd for other, other things to be going on, other adults to be around in that situation. Um, but my, the thing that I think is being glossed over is the fact that, as was mentioned multiple times, this is not just. Even though it's Scout Hall and the T C T V is using it and Cub Scouts are using it, it's not just for Cub Scouts and T C T V. It's for the community. So while I understand that he needs to have his things there, I do think that everyone has to have. Some way of locking these things up. I don't think that they should be out and about. Um, I don't think they should be in the way of whoever's occupying the space at the time. Um, and I think that would be. Help a lot in a situation where everyone's concerned is the pace when they come in, that it needs to be. In a certain way. So everyone needs to be putting up their things at the end of the day or at the end of their time at Cub Scout, at Scout Hall.
Can I, can I finish my thought?
I agree, um. Candace, can you be a little bit louder?
Uh, yeah, so Candace Graves, I D Queen Lake Road, the chairman of Parks and Rec Commission. So in the summertime, we have playground. In the summertime, we used the senior center for all children, different ages. And from eight o'clock to ten o'clock in that facility is all kinds of stuff, and that stuff is everywhere. That is mostly senior center domain. We don't touch their stuff. We respect their stuff. We work around them. Their staff is, that was there. Doing their stuff. There was no separate, you know, cuz it's a town building. And they had town things to do because that's what they do in that building. It's the senior center, community center. And we were allowed to go in there, but we had to be respectful. We couldn't touch anything in there. There's earrings and things that you could put a buck in and get. There's all kinds of dangers that could happen. We had little, little ones. Nothing happened. No one touched anything. At the end of the day, we put everything back. They're all right.
Okay.
It's a public building. Parks and Rec can use it. We are the community. We are, we do the recreational needs for this town, for the youth. You know, but I don't think that's space is big enough for what the scouts need it for. There is a building. I'm not talking about upstairs. I'm talking about downstairs. And that's why I didn't wanna say anything because it's a totally different entity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ken. Um.
Can I finish my thought from earlier?
I'll come right back to you. Did, did, did you wanna add something?
You know, I just had a thought. I agree with Candace. That is a large area. Steve was there once. Steve was at the high school once. Do you wanna talk about where Steve's men? Well, cuz I don't. I wanna talk about figuring out how to help. These two entities share Scout Hall, and for nine years I did the pushback. We are gonna have issues if it all gets taken over. And as soon as it got cleared to be opened. The current board of selectmen said, we don't have to put anything in place or have anybody sign anything. Here you are tonight, an hour in with an issue. Cuz somebody spread their wings in Scout Hall. When it went to town floor, it was for the youth. If you read the article that passed. That was what that building was being restored to be utilized for.
And that's exactly who we wanna serve.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bring it to a close. Steve, you can fini, you can finish and then.
Point earlier.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman.
I've already stopped Steve a couple of times.
So to answer Matt's earlier comment about he doesn't want T C T V in there when the scouts are in there. That's fine. Let's put security cameras in there for the safety of everybody. And for the scout groups that we have talked to, most of them say, security cameras are fine. Especially considering the problems that scouts have had with certain leaders over the years and, you know, if. You're, you're working with kids and you don't want security cameras around, and this has been said in the public, you should probably be on camera. All right, I have no problem working there all day on camera because we're not doing anything wrong. Um, and I would also just say, you know, we set up the shelves and everything. I'm sorry, some people don't like them. But we set it up for the community. But we set it up for the community as your kind of, this is your kind of living room. And yeah, you know, the scouts can come in and play, and I will reiterate again. You have more room than the layout that we approved in the Scout Hall reuse committee. And, and I'm willing to work with you on everything. So what are we talking about here? You know, this seems like a non-issue. But, you know, I, I get it. You want to go over it, so. We'll work with you. And also, um, I have a fact sheet on Scout Hall and TCTV because I think there's been some misinformation irresponsibly spread in the community. And if it's being spread by town officials, shame on you. Shame on you if you're spreading misinformation about this. That's not leadership.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep it on, again, operating procedures and, and.
I understand, but I wanted to say that.
Uh, Matt block forward. Glenn, is it quick?
Real quick, an observation. We don't have much parking down here.
Yeah.
Why not look into moving the park up here, Amidon Park with the memorial right up front of the, the hall?
As I said, look, we're gonna go to the Development Services and start to pull apart, what, what do we need to do to do that? As a separate discuss, tied into this, of course, uh, as, as we, we've shown that it is a part of that discussion, but I'm gonna deal with that one separately. This is about deconfliction of space. Um, I'm not, Hannah, I, I see your hand up, but I'm not, I'm not gonna take any more comments. I've got to, I've got to move this along for a discussion, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board. There is a motion on the table that has been seconded for, um, for the operating procedures as, um, was edited and put into our packet. I, I would say, or I would at least offer for part to add into it is to remove TCTV a- as, uh, an, uh, the entity in there and put it as dedicated municipal space. I would add a section on parking, obviously, just the, the lack thereof in that any, um, any occupants would have to make, um, additional accommodations for parking off-site. Fixtures must be, uh, um, stowed when not used, stored. And that scheduling using my town government must be used to deconflict the space. That's what I would add to this. As a, um, a- again, using, um, Matt's terminology of a temporary fix until we can tackle the greater issue of, um, like, Jeff was saying about overall use of town property.
I'm not on town government, so would I give my authorization or request?
We would, we would handle that as a part of the process that you, uh, when you, when you applied.
Thank you.
We would be able to do that.
Mr. Chair.
That, 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 that document that you file, if we, if we, if Holly puts it on there, we do that anyway. But, but that's, that's the point is that we would use that scheduling, that current scheduling thing as the deconfliction tool to make sure that we don't have, um, shared space.
Understood. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A clarification, an observation, and sorry, dear, I would like to take an action item at the end of my discussion. A- as we prepare to move forward to this. John, the My Town Government is separate from TempletonMA.gov. That was where, that's where the scheduling and the deconflicting can come into play, and that is another useful tool. We tend to interchange those two, but it's actually a subset because our official is TempletonMA.gov. Just an observation, the night we did our retreat over there, and the next day I went in, I chatted with Steve for a few minutes on my way home from an appointment, and I looked at a couple of things. But I've noticed, and I noticed it again tonight, the cars are parking right out in front on the grass. We've had a lot of discussions in the last couple of meetings about vehicles parked on town property and on the grass. I'm, I'm bringing it up intentionally. One, I, I personally don't feel they belong there. But two, again, a little bit of history. The front of that building, the walkway, the original set of stairs, the original handicap ramp, and there used to be two three rail fences around those grassy patches. That was an Eagle Scout project. Young man is a thirty-seven-year cancer survivor. It's an absolute miracle. He's still with us. His family is very much deeply rooted in town. His family is very involved in things in town. The Boy Scouts of America has a policy. When you put, and a town adopts an Eagle Scout project, the town takes some ownership as well, and they're supposed to maintain and preserve that project. I, for one, would like to see the three rail fences get put back.
Hmm.
That would eliminate the parking on the grass. It would restore the building to its intended use. And we could actually watch the grass grow back instead of the big bald spots that come up as it approaches the pavement. So that, that's my observation, and I would more than willing to do the research, get the original photographs and work with buildings and grounds.
Buildings, grounds, Development Services. I think we can fix it. We, we care of the library's parking problem from a sign perspective, so.
For the actionable item, I would take this on to facilitate and help, uh, if necessary, mediate, but connect all the dots, get all the stakeholders, you know. I have no problem, like, can you go over first thing tomorrow, chat with the electricians? Get a temporary solution. Can we do some parking here, especially in the off-hours? They're not there in the evenings, just like when we do the things. That's an easy fix. But again, it's reach out, shake hands, have a conversation. I'm sure they're reasonable people and we can make this happen. And everything else, yeah, I'll gladly help.
What's your recommendation for, you know, Matt made a motion for operating procedures. I made some recommendations for some edits on it. What, what do you want? What would be your recommend, if you're willing to do that, what, what do you want to do with this? Or what would be your recommendation?
My, my recommendation, we, we need to have in writing how it would be amended. I absolutely agree. Make this the town building operating procedures because we have various units and organizations in and out of a number of buildings all the time. Um, yeah, I agree with you, um. To Matt's point, uh, I, I see the, the reason he wants this, um, until we have this in writing where we actually have it clean and figured out, as much as it pains me to say this, I would recommend we defer till the, our next meeting and make sure this is brought up as an agenda item, as old business. If not the first or second item, so we can actually get this thing put together, put to bed. But for tonight, let's come up with a gentleman's agreement. And let's focus on doing what we need to do for our youth. That would be my recommendation.
With, with your gracious offer as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and I, I will take that on as an action item if the board approves.
What's the rest of the chair?
Yes.
I will move to not defer, um, table this item for revisions until the next regular business meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, um, under old business.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second to table until the next business meeting. Any discussion on tabling? Can, we can operate until that time?
Oh, yeah.
I just have a question on the.
I see North and South head nods, so that's a good thing.
I think Steve and John have a good working relationship. Yeah, I just was wondering, um, the liability with the non-paved parking wa, parking area. Is there a liability to the town?
We're, we're, we're getting motions to table. Yeah, we, we can bring that back up. We're, we're tabling, so we can, we can, we can address that. Again, Adam's not waiting to, you know, two, three weeks to do that. I want to have the discussion now, billings and grounds. Uh, Tim has graciously offered to go out and, and try and do these things. Let's ask those questions. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, anything?
Mike, as part, Mike, as part of the motion to table, I would ask if you, um, if you get the, uh, get the current word document from Mr. Lontane. And if you want to turn on track changes and add whatever it is, your, or make whatever edits you want, you think you need to it. Um, and then send it back to me so I can take a look at it. I'm more than happy to collaborate to get this situated.
Yep, within OML, um. It's bas- basically putting in, in writing what my edits would be. So, you know, not deliberating, but my edits would go into it and for the next meeting.
Okay, so you're doing something different than Tim.
I am. I'm, I'm, I'm basic, you know, if I, if I had.
I just want to make sure, yeah.
Put my, what I have. Matt's still tracking it. I'm just going to put my stuff into, um, on, on paper.
Bring it back.
To Matt's point, we, we can work one-on-one. As long as we don't get into serial conversations, we can conduct business. What he's proposing, him and you back and forth with the track.
Putting mine.
With a track changes document, we're not into an OML violation. And if we want to share it with the board, it needs to go through to the town administrator to send that out to the rest of us. But we cannot comment or deliberate at that point. That would, that would keep us away from even skirting OML.
We just want a clean document.
Absolutely.
We get together.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
Matt, does that work for you?
Yes.
Anything else on table? Hearing none on the motion to table Scout Hall operating, uh, procedures to the next business meeting. Um, how do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Alright, good discussion, everybody.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Do we need to have the board power me to make the?
We all know you're doing. Steve, nice to meet you, Steve. Um, I see Peter has been on patiently, um. I'd like to move H up, uh, to our next item. That, that involves Mr. Sanborn with our, uh, write a first refusal. Yep. I will be back. You want me to continue or just hang, hang, hang tight? I can't. Yeah.
This is my neck of the woods. This is my neck of the woods. Trying to figure it out.
That's the other item, though. That's conservation.
And I know you're good at GPS, so this is.
Peter, I'm just waiting for, uh, Tim to come back from a, uh, bio break. Oh, okay. Um, this is H.
And I'll need Matt to come in the office at some point. Or probably by Goodwill Center for electronic production.
You say Matt?
Matt's sign or.
Adam, oh, Adam, I'll come in tomorrow.
Okay. Breathe it over, everybody.
Yeah, just leave it. I'm sure Holly will contact you, Glenn, for your. Because Matt's gonna stop by tomorrow, so maybe. Monday.
Monday, fine.
I'm just saying, because he still needs to sign it, so then, and you get a copy of it?
Were there two?
Congratulations.
Thank you. I gotta bring her a copy of the bond.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, thanks.
Apologize for that.
Yeah, no, no, no problem at all. We're only human. Alright, um, Peter Sanborn is with us. Um, this is in reference to a letter dated August twenty-eighth that actually came to me and I gave it to, um, to Adam. This is a, a, a write of first refusal. Uh, Pete, do you want to just give us the quick once-over on it?
Sure. Um, so Holly emailed me about this. Let me say that this is, um, this is an outlier for me because it had nothing, this has nothing to do um, the work that we did for the town when, uh, we were doing the community development work. I think this forty B, my guess is this forty B was probably permitted, uh, when Sean was here. I can't remember Sean's last name.
Yes.
So we had no involvement in this at all, but I'm willing to share a little bit with you. That's all. So, um, this, I mean, I'm assuming that the board is generally familiar with this development. It's a development of nineteen, nineteen, um, homeownership units of which four are affordable. Um, under the, under forty B, for homeownership projects, a minimum of, of twenty-five percent of the units were required to be affordable. The rest could be market rate. And I did some quick checking on the assessor's records. Um, and it looks like that's exactly what, what it was. Four of nineteen units are affordable. The remaining fifteen were sold as market rate units. So you have the option to purchase this if you want, or you have an option to do nothing. The, as the letter stated, if you do nothing and the sellers are unable to find a qualified um, affordable housing buyer, then this would revert to a market rate unit. And you would lose one unit on your subsidized housing inventory. Um, which you're currently at slightly more than seven percent of the required ten percent. Um, other states that the maximum affordable sales price is two hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and eighty-four. That's based on a regional calculation. So, um, by the assessor's data, um, not even all of the market rate units are assessed for that. So, most of them are assessed in the mid-twos to the very low threes. So, I'm not familiar specifically with the unit. Um, I think it is a smaller unit than most of the others. So, um, I don't know what the prospects of a buyer paying two eighty-eight um, unit would be. Be two, um, I guess I can't recommend the town would be making a good fiscal decision to, to buy this unit even if it had the resources to do so.
And we're, and we're work, Pete, Peter, we're working on the, we've been working on the resources for it for a few years now. Uh, but I agree, we're not in the position to, um, to acquire the property. I don't know what the rest of the.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Matt.
I moved to waive the right of first refusal for twenty-four Water Wheel Circle.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? This, uh, with that language would mean that we're, we're passing on purchasing the property.
Yeah, I ha, I have a concern with that because in the past, every time we have waived our first right of refusal, it hasn't necessarily come back and bit us in the butt, but we found out that things could have worked better and it, it's not helping us. And if we're currently sitting just north of seven percent of the required ten percent, I'm having a hard time giving this one away.
I, I. Don't have the cash for it. I, the, how does the, um, how does the Baldenville uh, project impact? You know, that's a question that I would have in terms of adding affordable house units.
I, I understand there is an intent for the Baldenville project to impact.
Yeah.
That is still, we're counting chickens before they hatch. That, that is not even anywhere. This is here right now.
Yep.
And, and we do have housing insecurities and this, this three percent delta is what's bugging me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, so I express some skepticism as to um, it remaining, given the price point, they're remaining, um, an affordable unit. It's certainly not out of the question. And the other thing the letter addresses, um, is if, if you decline to exercise a first right of refusal, does the town want to be of any assistance, um, in trying to market this? What happens? So Chapper, Chappa, which is a statewide organization, if any board members are unaware of that, um, they are the monitoring agent. Um, when they have a resale coming up, they engage a local private real estate agency to market these. So there would be an opportunity for the town to softly help promote the marketing of this, putting it on the website, announcing it at selectments meeting that this unit's becoming available. Uh, this letter says this unit's available for sale. Um, I checked on a couple of sites. Um, there, these units are typically um listed and it's not on there yet. So I, while it says this began on September third, I don't think in fact it is yet actively being marketed. That's something I'm willing to follow up with Chappa on. I tried to contact them. I haven't heard back from them yet. I'm willing to pursue this to get more information if you'd like.
So that it does not fall out of the inventory.
Right. No guarantee that it won't, but.
I I don't know what else we we can do. I mean, you know, as far as making announcements or otherwise, I mean, I I like, you know, to what Tim is talking about, I'm definitely supportive of keeping our numbers where they are and rising. So whatever, what else, whatever else we can do, sure.
The other thing you might wanna be cognizant of, um, and Adam and I have not talked about this. If the town if the town were to acquire this, then any future disposition of it, either rental or resale, you have to follow chapter thirty B processes. So it's, it becomes, it just becomes a town piece of real estate. So you have to do a disposition of it like you would any other piece of town real estate.
Liz?
How short is, how short is the town on being able to buy the? You know?
I don't know what the um, the fund balance is right now. I'm, I'm probably sure it's not two eighty-eight, but we do have a, an uh, a fund for this, yes.
So, i- if I may.
Hmm.
Um, so it, you know, if you're looking for two eighty-eight, if there's a hundred and fifty sitting in there, you've got town meeting coming up. Ask for the difference now. You get it in there so you have the money. I I don't know, maybe I'm being too simplistic in my thought process. But, you know, the the town continues to, in, if my memory serves, may not. But if it does, you know, continues to turn these away in review, you know, turning down right of first refusal. And and the, you know, oh, we don't have the money. Well, maybe you need to take it to town floor and get the money. So my, my comments.
Thanks, thanks, Liz. I appreciate that. Kale?
Is there an income limit?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
No. Yes, there is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, well, I understand Tim's intent, which I think is in uh the boards on. I I do have some concern.
Yeah.
Because uh, the board will be voting also at the fall town meeting, at least it's gonna be under draft warrant. And the next meeting, we have three houses that we acquired through tax title that we have to put out for sale, uh auction as well. Um, I'm not a fan of the town being a custodian of town properties, town buildings. I think we struggle just maintaining what we have. Uh, as Mr. Bennett pointed out, we we're, we have issues with Scout Hall. I've been working with our Director of Public Services for that handicap parking space. Um, so um, I just want to urge caution on for the town to be acquiring any more properties. Uh, we have some that we're gonna be looking at town meeting to uh auction off. So uh, I just and especially with the challenges of uh of our financial, with the state aid, uh, everything else, uh, I just have my hesitant, uh, just hesitant in that regard. I just wanted to share that with the board.
Okay. I I mean, I I don't disagree with what you're saying. It becomes an an added burden to be able to manage the properties or otherwise, but that's that's why we have, that, you know, that's why we partner with people like Peter and yeah.
Yep. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
To that point, do we know if any of those three properties are currently on our list of affordable housing or are they outside of that scope? And we may, we may not know that.
I I don't have that, but we acquired them through uh tax foreclosure. So.
But I understand they were taken through tax foreclosure, but were they on our inventory of affordable housing? That's the piece I I don't have an answer to. So and one other question, if I may, to Mr. Sanborn. Mr. Sanborn, the letter in front of us, when I get down the fifth paragraph, the any indifference between affordable price, open market price. I'm confused on the very last sentence. However, Chappa will make every effort to work with the current owner to instead sell to an ineligible purchaser, subject to a new deed rider preserving the affordable home in perpetuity.
I thought that was a typo.
I, it may be.
Yeah.
But you know, I, I don't know if he can answer that, but it's something I caught as I reviewed it.
I agree with you.
Yeah. So to that point.
Excuse me. Go ahead, finish.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Um, that sentence to me as written is, does not make sense. So.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, that may be a typo. I don't know.
I I think it is.
Yeah.
But at least we understand that that of course they would work with them to find an eligible person to be able to, again, keep it on the um, on the affordable housing walls. It wouldn't make sense for them to say, I'm finding, I'm I'm finding someone that can't do it or an ineligible person. So.
And and you know me, I'm kinda nitpicky on the, the minuscule portions of.
I would never accuse you of that.
I admit it. I tend to zero in and catch all the errors. So I have one other question and a comment for the board, just a consideration. And this would go to the TA as well. We have not yet gotten to the warrant. Would it be in our interest to put this in front of the town floor? And to find a funding source to reach out to former Senator Goby, since this kind of aligns under her office's position and or attempt to secure a state note, which come at a much better interest rate than normal borrowing. So I'm just kinda thinking outside the box.
What's the name of the the account?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I I think if, I mean, if the board were inclined to go pursue this, I would be more open looking at, well, first we have to figure out what the Community Preservation Act locally has available for affordable housing. Um, I would have to go check, uh, work with Mr. Henshaw to see, because I could see if we're using CPA funds or that are dedicated for affordable housing to acquire this, that would make, that's where I would kinda go with it with the funding source.
Did you guys hear?
If you were inclined to do that.
Um, yeah, I'm just saying. If we want, if if as a board, if we're deciding to go to go after it and and basically draw the line and say, no, we don't wanna let it go. I'm sure, let's figure it out.
Yep.
And and Mr. Like, like Liz was saying, let's put it in front of, if the town is desiring to to get these kinda properties, let's let them, let's ask the question.
And and Mr. Luontaine raises a valid point. We don't know right in front of us tonight what's in the CPA account. Although, we can still figure that out, but if we get this on to the warrant with an alternative or an additional support of financing this, make up the delta. That that would be my thought. Or make up any shortfall.
And we have until December second.
We do.
To do this, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm just perplexed because I thought Mr. Sanborn wouldn't necessarily tell the town what to do or recommend this property for.
Because of the amount, like he, he was talking about how much the uh the amount is. So he was talking about mid, mid two hundreds to low three hundreds. So this at a two eighty-eight, you know, I heard him, I my, my, what I took away from him saying what you heard was maybe this property isn't the best one to do it with, but based on valuation and assessor's report. But again, I I I think it winds up, uh, you know, Liz started the conversation and you, you, you continued on to it to say, how many are you gonna let go? I mean, since I've been on the board, this is prop, this is definitely, I I don't have to take off my shoes to start counting how many, but it was definitely uh, um, you know, more than five or six. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, could, could we start by advertising for them until, at least until?
That's with the waiver though. I mean.
That's with the waiver.
Yep.
Right. What we're saying is let's throw down and try and retain this to not uh waive it a- as the motion is on the table for right now. The motion is to waive, to basically let the opportunity go right now, but the the, you know, we're, go ahead.
Oh, I just also wanna bring to the board's attention too. I mean, if the board were to waive this, we could also bring a question to town meeting to see, get the feel of the town relative to these, if they wanted the select board to take actions to acquire these as well. So I kinda wanna throw that out there. Like, you, yeah, you, you, you could certainly control the war, you could take an action to include this particular one. But also you could waive and then put the question out to town meeting to see what, how town meeting feels about it.
Um, what's the impact of not voting on waiver, waiver tonight? Waiving.
I believe we have till, what was the date?
We have until December. And that, that last.
Let's, let's progress in opportunity.
That, that last sentence, if it is indeed a typo with that word ineligible, it starts off, Chappa will make every effort to work with the current owner to sell to, but we, we need to make sure that language is cleaned up. But yeah, I I would be in favor of we, we pursue this. We have a little bit of time and we have a potential way to look at the funds, but it's gonna take the town meeting approval.
I, we, we start in an account for this, correct?
We have CPA funds dedicated to affordable housing.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm just, I'm trying to find out how much we have specifically for that. Like, where are we at?
Pretty empty. Pretty.
Is it pretty empty?
Yeah, cuz we save the seven, the seven something to the project, Bolenville project.
No, there's a sep, there's a separate fund for this. Uh, at town meeting, we, we, I I remember we voted to be able to allow an account to, to collect funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a specific, you know, CPA money that's going into it. I, I, um.
It is something different.
Yeah, I just, we need to figure out what, what the dollar amount is in that right now. I think it, you know, like they have an unreserved. I believe it's a specific spot and I just, I I'm looking at the BVA, I can't find it right now. I'd like to figure out. I mean, we're talking about several different options. That's obviously one of them. If we can start off by saying, oh, we've got twenty thousand dollars in this and therefore now we've got two sixty-eight to come up with for that, um, what was the terminology? Maximum resale price is what the two eighty-eight is based on. So let, let's, um, we've got some time. Um, we've got the warrant. We're, we'd be approving the warrant tonight.
Next meeting.
Okay.
So because they still have an option.
Do we wanna ask a question or find funding?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The board wishes to take on their map, another route. I will withdraw the motion.
Okay.
I'll withdraw the second.
All right. All right, it's withdrawn.
Question.
All right, so how are we moving forward?
Question.
A question or actually going after funding? Going after funding at least would be able to specifically go after this property. Right? And in, in, in essence, you're answering the question by, you know, if if the town's for it, then that's the first step, you know, well, if if you're for it, well, then this is where it's gonna come from. We're gonna also have to de- decide how, where it's gonna come from. Right?
Well, we have free cash, but our policy dictates where that free cash goes. So the board would have to look at reviewing that policy, cuz I'm following the policy on our free cash plan.
I think, I think it would either be a two-part question or two consecutive questions when we get to the
Okay.
packet tonight. Is the town
willing to take?
Will, is the town willing? Yes or no? If it's no, then it's defeated and we don't even have to get to the second.
It'll be like that three by question.
Yeah.
Private road change.
Yeah. And we've done that many times.
Times, yeah, it's been done.
Okay.
And then if it's, if it's yes, then it'll be the money come from question.
Yep.
Whether it's stabilization, whether it's free cash, whether it's a combination, well, you know.
But I seriously think instead of trying to second guess it, you know, we, right now, we do not pass on the first right of refusal, but we need to bring this in front of the town.
Okay.
Let's do what the voters are beside and instruct us to do.
So two additional articles, a question, and then uh if that passes, then the, the, the next article would be to actually address this specific property. That's what I'm hearing.
Hmm.
Okay. All right, uh, we don't have a motion on the table and we have a direction forward for two articles. And any other discussions on, you know, possible funding seen with the CPAs, um, um, amount is. Okay. All right, anything further? Um, Peter, any, any final thoughts?
Um, yeah, uh, sort of a split decision tree here. If they are able to find an affordable buyer, do you still want to opt the first right of refusal? Or if they're able to find a qualified eligible purchaser, are you happy to forego the opportunity to buy this?
I mean, in my mind, if we, if they find an affordable buyer, it's gonna stay on the, it's gonna stay as an affordable house, then at that point, yeah, we don't have to. At that point, we would forego the first right of refusal because it's staying in the, it's staying on the rolls as affordable housing at that point. At least that's my thought process.
Agreed, it remains on inventory.
Right.
No. Mr. Mr. May um is following the conversation and he says it, um, or he uh, the, is uh highlighting that he thought it was uh seventeen thousand five hundred, but it was depl- uh, he said it was depleted by the board due to lack of use. I mean, the idea was that we were to grow this. We weren't getting any properties for, you know, seventeen thousand dollars. If that's how much is in it right now, but again, when we were talking about how we could assemble the different funds to say, this amount's coming from this, this amount's coming from this, and we would be able to secure it. But that, 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 that was Mr. May's point in terms of a dollar figure that he, that he thought he saw.
Mr. Chairman again.
Yeah.
Um, as you close this out tonight, just, um, do you want me to do any further exploration on this? Or do you wanna turn it over to Holly and to Adam?
Um, from a, a, a art, warrant article perspective, yes, for uh, for Adam. But yeah, but moving forward, if you could just keep your um ear open, if they do find somebody who is uh an eligible person to keep it as affordable housing, we would, that, that is obviously a key piece of information for us.
Okay, then I'm, I'm gonna try to engage into some communication with Chappa.
Okay.
To see where they are in the process.
All right. Sounds good, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Yep.
Can I also make a note that um pursuant to what Peter just stated, the first question that we have on the art, of the, of the article uh for town meeting should state that um, the, will the town does the town want us to take or to purchase that property pending the inability to sell it as a, as a uh, as a affordable uh property to a private buyer? This is a note on that.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. All right, thanks, Peter. Have a great night. Thanks for hanging.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, uh, jumping back, um, item F. It's uh twenty to the hour. Um, do we want?
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make the motion to extend past ten o'clock if the pending uh completion of all agenda items.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to move, uh, work past ten, how do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Uh, select board goals. I've reviewed it, um, basically what Adam owed us back from our retreat was a clean copy with all of our changes. Um, there is a couple that I, you know, you know, the wording might not have what been what I thought it was, but it captures what we're trying to do. So I, I, I'm good with the, the plan as it was presented back to us. If everyone else has had a chance to go through it to uh, to. If everyone else has had a chance to go through it to, uh, to confirm.
The, the question I have that immediately jumped off in the, uh, the follow-up and the rep. Is, uh, I thought we had a lot more names filled in. This looks awful sparse to me. Maybe my memory is a little weak, but.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I wrote them down. I wrote them down at the time.
Mister Chair. The board, this is for the action for the next board meeting. If you want to give me any information you want to add to this or any board, please just email me because it's. We have possible action on the agenda this evening, but if you look at the date on, you know, goals, it's actually for the, our twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Day of September for.
All right. All right. So we'll just take a look at some of the, um, the names.
Yeah, anybody has anything, just email me and I'll add those, uh, have that finalized for the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I mean, when we went through, it's not like, um, you know, when Jeff wasn't looking, we added his name. We all, we all knew the ones that we were, you know, gonna, uh, champion.
So if you don't see your name there, just email me and I'll get it in.
All right, um, let's move on to, uh, the draft warrant.
Hey, uh, you have the draft warrant in front of you this evening. Uh, you want to go article by article?
Um, I think that's best.
Yep. Okay. Article one, amending the fiscal year twenty-five operating budget. This is, uh, we learned of a discount to our debt. This is actually a drop in the budget for our discount that we have for our, uh, debt service budget. I don't hear any questions. I'll just move to the next one.
Uh, real quick, Adam, just, um, if we're reducing the sum budget for debt service, where does that go?
If we're reducing the budget?
Yeah, you're, it says here to see if the town will amend the FY twenty-five operating budget by reducing the sum budgeted for debt service. By twenty-four thousand seven hundred and six dollars and no cents, um, to two million seventy-six thousand and nine hundred and eighteen. So that two, that, that money that we're reducing out of that account goes somewhere. Where does it go?
I believe it would be free cash.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's what, that's, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Right, an underused account, like if, 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 if someone wasn't spending enough, that, that's essentially where the free cash is.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the, that's what I wanted. The answer was, is we're taking it from one line, where does it end up after we take it out? If it goes into free, if it goes into the, uh, the free cash, that's fine. That's what I was looking for.
Or it, it, it goes to get certified. Yes, yes, yes. It's not just an automatic.
Article two sewer payment to the general fund. This was, uh, the transfer that the select board approved for the sewer department. And the sewer commissioners decided to have it come out of their retained earnings and they have sufficient funds for that.
Yeah, we were planning that.
Article three, Main Street Bridge debt exclusion for repair. We have the amount, that three point seven million. I'm still waiting for the senior project engineer to give me the latest number for this, but I have three point seven plugged in or any lower sum. Um, this would obviously be subject to passage at town meeting as well as. At the polls, um, on November election, the state did approve putting the question the board put forward. On the ballot, so that'll be up to the, uh, voters come the, um, presidential election or the state election. Yeah.
The November. November election, basically.
November, correct.
The presidential.
I'm sure it'll be a high turnout.
Yeah, always is.
Um, article, any questions on that one? No, okay. Article four is the sewer roof borrowing. This was an article that the, um, sewer commissioners, uh, presented to us, uh, that's why you have on their, uh, select board on behalf of the sewer commission. They're looking, they want to do their roof over there. That's why you see that they're looking at borrowing for that. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. In article five, I'm finalizing this. I received the draft, but I don't have the cross outs and all the, the changes to it. I have, I'd sit down one day. Hopefully I don't, I'm in the office. I don't have any disruptions and just go through it and finalize it.
Do you want me to resend you that draft copy?
Oh, I have it.
Okay.
I just got to do the cross.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and all the final. Uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll get that onto the, uh, final draft warrant for the board at their next September meeting. Uh, Jeff was working on that with the council on aging, I believe, so, um, I'm working on trying to get that to the fall town meeting. Um, this article six, any questions on that one? Okay, article six, the sale of tax duty lands. This is what I brought up earlier. We have three properties that we acquired for tax foreclosure. I'll have them all listed out in here for your draft warrant. Um, Kelly, we did, I think in October of twenty twenty when we had those lists. Uh, it'd be a similar article. Then article seven is a retention of tax deed to lands. This is one property that, uh. Bob was looking at holding for highway purposes on. Hubbardson Road. Was it?
Look at the list.
Believe it was Hubbard. Well, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but, uh, I believe it was, I could be wrong.
No, was it, uh, first? Versus Second Street.
Okay, so it'd be, you'll have the final one. I, I might have Hubbardson Road wrong, but it's one property we're looking at retaining for, I mean, highway purposes. I just don't have it for some reason at the top of my head. Article eight. Um, this one, this is actually interesting. So this is really up to the board. I, I don't have, I mean, we'll save money if we buy it outright on interest. But we could do an ambulance lease or we could do the ambulance purchase. We have sufficient funds to fund four hundred fifty K out of our ambulance receipts. So we could do a purchase or we could do an ambulance lease. I mean, the purchase, I believe is just change it to two, uh, majority vote instead of a two-thirds vote. Um, so I leave that to the board.
This is.
Adam.
Go ahead.
And you said we have, you said we have the money in ambulance or available that if we wanted to do a full purchase straight out, we could?
Correct.
And that's confirmed with, uh, that's confirmed with the fire chief and anyone else who needs to, who needs to, uh, say yes to it?
Correct. The, the fire chief's waiting to hear what the board wants to do.
Does he have a recommendation?
I believe he would want to purchase it outright. And I, he's not opposed to a lease either, but. I think purchasing outright at least will save on interest.
What's the, uh? What's the difference in funds? Where if you borrow for X number of years versus? Or the cake down on the table? I mean, how much?
Say roughly eighty K.
Eighty?
I could be off.
Yeah, I think it's between, somewhere between eighty and a hundred, somewhere in there.
Correct over, what is it, a six-year period? I think it was. We were at least it for six years because it's of interest rates five point. Little over five percent.
And the funding is in there.
Funding is there.
And instead of taking like seventy, seventy-three out each year, it would just be, it's staying in there.
Yep. I mean, the fire chief, uh, the fire department, uh, with the ambulance alone brought in, I believe, five hundred, over five hundred fifty K. And ambulance receipts in fiscal year twenty-four. So they're, they've been working hard out there and, um, bringing those receipts in.
Well, you just watch the, watch the weekly reports. It's, you know.
Ball volume.
Twenty-three, twenty-five ambulance and one or two fire things.
I don't know, what, what does the board want to do?
Um, personal opinion in my case is if we can buy it straight out and save ourselves up to a hundred thousand dollars and. In, uh, finance fees along the way, then, then we can do it right now. Let's put it to the, let's put it to the town to buy it straight out.
Well, the, uh.
Does that have to go to capital?
That would be the question.
Next year.
Okay.
Okay.
And will the account be depleted or will it just keep getting filled in with the, uh, new receipts?
Roughly a hundred K, I want to say. Could be off, but we'll have that roughly. But remember, the fire chief, with the fire department, still bringing ambulance receipts throughout the whole school year.
We'll keep depositing.
Correct.
Yep.
I like the idea of having an immediate asset versus a liability drug out over time.
Uh, so, I mean, the money's coming in and you won't have to take part of it going out the door. It's just, we're not creating debt.
No.
Be mindful of that. I mean, it won't be, we won't have the asset immediately in hand. Obviously, there's a, there's going to be a waiting period to get the thing.
Oh, you're, you're looking at probably a two-year build time for an ambulance.
But at the same time, if we're paying cash, at least we can get line a lot faster.
So consensus from what I'm hearing is going along with the purchase, so I'll draft that up for a purchase.
Okay.
I just wanted to get some boards to put. Okay, uh, any other questions on the ambulance? No. Article nine is the extraordinary inspection workload. Uh, Mister Bennett followed up with me on this. Uh, Lori requested this through development services. And I will add this document.
Matt, I know I can't get it to you.
Thank you.
Just, just, just make sure you hold all these for me. I'll pick them up tomorrow.
Will do. Thank you.
So Lori provided this document because there are some questions on this. Uh, you don't see this article too often and, um.
Just happy she provided this for the board because I'll be able to add that to the voter's guide as well. So the public has, have all the, that information.
It's just, it's just further justification.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I believe Lori might be at our.
Hopefully she's.
Meeting one with the warrant, right?
Feeling like crap earlier this week.
And they had COVID.
Okay, any questions on that one or?
The only thing we'll have to remember is we can put as much money in, in there we want, but we'll have to adjust the spending levels of those revolving funds.
Correct.
Because they were just set at town meeting. I think one is twenty and the other is twenty-five or so, whatever, but it doesn't matter.
Right.
Like I said, you can. There'll be. Money in there as you want, but we have to. Have to watch them and if they need more, then they'll have to adjust the spending limit for those revolving funds.
And have a meeting with the advisory. Good catch.
Whenever they're going to take possession of the building and be able to start doing that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, question online from Mister May about the ambulance. I missed that one. It popped up. Is, is there any, uh, trade-in? If you, you, you see it there?
I do.
Is there any consideration? I will, the last time I, we, I know we turned, uh, ambulance into.
No, it's a good question. I'll, I'll follow up with the fire chief tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's like a two thousand fourteen, so I don't know what's.
Right.
Going to be there. I mean, there might be some, but.
Okay.
Um, okay, that's article nine. Any other questions on that one?
No, no.
Article ten is the special stabilization fund. This was, um. So it keeps coming up year by year. Jeff brought up the special stabilization fund for, um. The meals tax. Yeah, so whenever we get it, wh- what, what we'll do is we'll have to adjust the policy anyways. Because, uh, we did so when we did establish the infrastructure one and that Jeff led the lead on that one as well. Uh, with this one, uh, whatever we get for that. Previous fiscal year meals tax, I'll be dedicated that exact amount to it, to the.
It just, it says from available funds.
Correct, Gail. That would be through policy. The board will adopt that through their policy.
Okay.
So town meeting needs to establish it.
Establish it.
And then the board would set the policy.
Okay.
But this, this was how town meeting voted way back when, I guess, with the information that was provided for police vehicles and small highway trucks. So I think that would resolve that matter at town meeting moving forward if we adopt, establish this account. Any questions on this one? Nope. Okay, article eleven. Uh, this is the, um, this. Candace is here for this one, uh, and Bob. So, uh. Building grounds presented the tractor at the Capitol. Candace has submitted, or excuse me, Parks and Rec have submitted the Capitol request. For, uh, an addendum to be issued before the, the fall. Town meeting. For these, so we're looking at two tractors for forty thousand dollars, so twenty thousand each. Um, I guess the, the. There's, there's been some issues with the tractor and this should resolve between buildings, grounds and parks and rec. Keeping all the fields up to date, everything else, um. I'm not sure. Either one, you want to come up here and explain it to the board or?
Our tractor went, it's gone and we are borrowing the last loaning tractor and. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a spare.
And it's with same, it's the same year, same amount of hours on it as the one that went, so. We need two tractors for the town, one for Park and Rec's use to do the things we need to do and one. For, because that one's not going to last much longer either.
Thank you.
The problem is, is, uh, we got a rotation on the tractors. When Carter was here, we were getting a tractor every year and rotating them out. And that hasn't been done in a few years, so. Now they're getting hours in use and where, um, and not being rotated, so.
And they already went through Capitol. The request already went through.
The tract, tractor for buildings, grounds did and Parks and Rec submitted it, uh, for the, the, this coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they'll have the, um, the report before the fall town meeting.
We want to put it in. You know, we need it.
I just want to make sure. Yes.
To Bob. So did you put it on cap, have, with the rotating of the tractors?
Yeah, I put it on.
Capital, but they, yeah.
Yeah, it's ongoing capital item that we don't, haven't made it.
Is there any further questions on article eleven?
No.
Okay. And then article twelve, this is deposits to the general fund stabilization, OPEB accounts. You see all the deposits, uh, the CapEx, infrastructure, OPEB is by the percentage and the policy. And OpEx is a little bit different because we dropped below the target because it's point five percent of the prior omnibus budget. So the point five percent of the prior omnibus, my calculation was ninety-five thousand. Um, instead of the percentage because we're catching up to our, we're re- below our target. Um, so I'm pretty sure we'll get closer, um, as long as we don't take any more out of our OpEx stabilization.
What was free cash certified at? About eight hundred?
Eight sixty-eight.
Good.
Okay.
So we're, 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 we're looking about the same than, uh, than, uh, as we were last year. Because I think we were able to give a, a budget of. Um, was it five, six hundred thousand? Well, I'm just starting to do.
We were south of five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'm just starting to, you know, I've got, got a figure of five thirty right now. I'm just starting to do the decrement math for things that we're assigning to free cash.
Well, free cash is a little bit higher this year. It would have been in line exactly the same as last year, but we had, the winter was a mild. Compared to the, the other year, yeah, in the, uh, the assessors declared the overlay surplus.
Yep. I'm just starting to.
That's, that's the delta.
Just doing the decrement math as we start to carve up free cash. No, no, I'm not, it's not, I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying you need to be aware of these figures.
Correct. And that is so far your warrant and you add, added two more tonight, so I'll, I'll try to get that in here, um. For the next meeting.
Okay.
That's your draft warrant. Uh, once you approve it, I'll send it over to the moderator as well as the advisory committee because they'll have to make their recommendations.
Yep, if it needs a legal review, that too.
Correct.
Yep.
That will be done.
What happened, um, if we go for something more, I go CPC.
Add it.
Okay.
Yep, and, and, and it's CPC article, uh, on behalf, uh, on select board on behalf of CPC or whatever. Yep, I, I see your hand, Matt. Go ahead. Oh, he froze.
Appetite from the board, knowing that, um, in article twelve, we're putting. Thing OpEx, we're putting the, exactly what the financial, um, policy states we should because we're below our, uh, we're below our amount in, uh, that fund. Is there any appetite to take a little bit more of what our, uh, free cash is and supplement that a little bit more in order to get that back up to where it needs to be quicker?
I, I mean, I, I, I'd like to say yes, but I, you know, as like I said, we're starting to carve it up and give out budgets and, and, and take a look at what our forecasts are. I, I think that two seventy and the amounts that we've got is we're following, following FMP. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. I'm inclined to leave it the way it is.
That was, since, since it's spelled out in the policy, I think we almost have to leave it the way it is.
And there's a potential that, um, free cash is as part of the solution for our Chappa discussion earlier, so I'd just like to leave it on the table.
Okay.
Matt, anything else on the warrant?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Yo, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. There was a, um, when, when auditor was on, he said that we had more than five hundred thousand dollars and that it should be applied to the old the pension one.
In, in terms of investment and making smart choices or otherwise?
Yeah. But is that something that needs to be on a, on?
Uh, no. You can, go ahead. You can answer it.
If I may through the chair, I believe what you're talking about is actually the overlay account with the assessors.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it's actually higher than that and the assessors actually declared, I believe it was eighty thousand of their overlay and that rolled into free cash. So they have, yeah, the board of assessors has been making some adjustments.
Right, but would we um, pay off some of our pension obligations with that excess?
That we consider a, a recurring expense, Gail.
Okay, just ask.
But thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
So what, what, what I was really surprised not to see on the warrant was something related to um, underfunding TCTV. And, um, if it was appropriate to ask why it was not only.
I, I was not gonna, I, I, I didn't ask where it to be put on, if, if the rest of the board has it. I, I think that TCTV i- is in flux with what, uh, funding they have, the personnel. Some of the, uh, some of their, uh, fifty, fifty-two hundred, fifty-five hundred, um, line items. I think we need to take a look at their budget and, and ra- and rather than just assigning them more cash to what their Comcast, um, in, uh, receipts are, I, I think we need to take a look at what, how that it's being managed. And we have to address that with, uh, the cable TV advisory committee. That, that's, you, you, you asked, I, the, the rest of the board might have a, a reason. You know? But that's, that's my feeling.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
To, Liz's question. And Steve and I had these discussions. The board could certainly look at, let's say TCTV's budget, and this is more of a budgetary discussion, but let's say if we can't, we don't have the funds to provide, uh, funding to, from the general fund to TCTV and the operating budget, the board could certainly consider s- supporting TCTV through capital through free cash. That is an option that I've discussed with Mr. Castle, so I, I understand what you're saying, um, but that's more, we're gonna have to have a lengthier discussion and more vetting going on.
I want to look at his, the core services that he provides. I, I've, I've done a lot of looking at their core documents for what they're trying to achieve and otherwise, and then matching up the budget to it, and right now it does not make sense to me. For how he's got his budget aligned, um, with what, what his perceived shortfalls are.
It would have to be a broader, more discussion with, with the cable TV advisory.
Yep.
But good question.
Hey, um, I, item I, action related to heating oil and services bid award.
Bob, if you come up there, favor, please. Uh, Bob, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, Bob's here for this, and he's, uh, he's always the one coming to our office saying, when are you putting that, that oil bid or heating oil bid? When are you gonna get this done? So it seems like it's an annual article, uh, annual item at this point. Bob, if you could present to the board.
Uh, good evening, Bob Sozak, Director of Public Services, um. Well, we went out for the, the heating oil bid like we do usually in a replacement of the old tanks that we discussed um, last year. We're a little bit late, uh, getting them out to bid, but we got two bids. And, um, Hefner's, uh, was the lowest bidder again this year. Um, Fratasselli was the second. And Hefner is the only one that bid it on replacing the old tanks. Actually cheaper than what they quoted me last year for cattle planning, so. Um, looking forward to move this along and have Polly, uh, push it right out because we haven't gotten another heating season. And I don't want all the oil barrels stuffed with oil and have to pump them back out. Now is a good time to get it done.
And that on the quote was alternate one? For the nineteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I, I understood.
Yep.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Just to, uh, just for an idea, what do you project for gallons for oil?
Um, I don't have that in front. It's gonna be close to the same as last year. Um, depending on the winters, if we have a, right now we're getting another heat wave, so that's in our favor, it's I can't project the, the temperature through the winter. In the past, we had some warmer months. It really didn't get a frost, um. So it's hard to tell by projected, it's gonna be in the same ballpark as last year.
What was last year? You don't have that off the top of your head?
I don't have that on top of my head, man.
That's fine.
Yeah, let the board know, uh, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
On the, with alternate one, and what you got approved that Tommy, it was a twenty-eight K?
Right.
So this, this came in at nineteen five nine one.
Right.
So that's some good news, um, by going out to bid.
That's eighty-five hundred dollars in our pockets basically on that.
Right, but it might be another tank that's close that, um, if there is that much left, I, I might as well re-get them all.
Yep.
Wrapped up and get done, but something that's well needed and needs to be done soon as possible.
Okay, I would move to award the heating, oil and services, um, bid award to Hefner's Energy North Group.
Second.
Terry had the second on that. Any, uh, further discussion or any other questions for Bob or Adam? Hearing none on the motion to award the heating and oil services bid to Hefner's Energy North Group, how do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Matt.
Safe travels, son.
All right. The next item, last item on new business is um, just concerning announcement related to the Mass Department of Commerce, uh, Conservation Land Acquisition, um. Commonwealth Massachusetts acting through DCR had, uh, has under consideration the acquisition of an interest, uh, in approx- approximately five point five acres of land in the town of Templeton. Property is currently a landlocked woodland parcel surrounded by Templeton State Forest. Uh, the proposed use for the property will be protected open space as an expansion of the state forest. Attached is the, the map marked Exhibit A, and that is in the packet. Yep.
Yep.
Well, I think, uh, I think on something, yeah. Yes, sir.
There we go. That's for the camera. So in doing so, um, the applicable regulations require the disclosure of the Commonwealth's reasons for the proposed land acquisition at a public hearing held in the city or town in which the such real property is located. To comply with this requirement, we ask the board to announce the Commonwealth is considering this acquisition for the above stated purposes at its next regularly scheduled meeting. The board is not nee- need to take any formal action on its part. Uh, so the announcement is certification of announcement pursuant to three oh ones, uh, code, uh, um, Regulation fifty-one point oh seven two, DCR P dash zero zero one, zero seven seven, Town of Templeton. It would be I, uh, clerk of the select board, that would be Jeff of the Town of Templeton, Massachusetts, do her- hereby certify that on September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, it was announced at a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen that the Department of Conservation and Recreation may acquire an interest in a parcel of land located in the Town of Templeton as shown on the attached locust map marked as Exhibit A for conservation and or recreation purposes. So we have now fulfilled our, our responsibility to make that announcement. Any questions, anyone? And it's just basically an announcement. All right, that takes us to the end of new business. Uh, we have two items of old business. First is, uh, an ARPA status project update uh, that Matt continually, uh, continually asks for of the town administrator, uh, Adam.
I received the request, uh, to add this agenda, agenda from Mr. Rebar. I think I should answer this now before Gail asked the question, because I already have a feeling you were gonna ask it.
I am.
Okay. So, uh, we received the drawings from the architect. I should, I'm actually gonna start working on the bid package tomorrow for the senior center kitchen. And I should have the specifications within a couple of weeks, he told me. So I have the drawings with the, I need the specifications, so I'll start the bid package. Once I get that, I'll put it all together, put that out to bid. Uh, so hopefully we'll get bidders. That's to be, gonna be the key for the senior center kitchen. Uh, the only real changes are under police support and equipment, there's some money spent there and then, uh, the HVAC. Excuse me, not the HVAC, the Yeah, it was the HVAC. But outside of that, that's the only real update. Um, we're still on track, uh, to con- continue. And I believe, uh, I'm not sure, Mr. Rebar, uh, when the board's looking at recommitting the funds for those that we can't commit to.
So I know that we have to recommit the ARPA administration. I, uh, we've, we booked six thousand for that. And we've used four hundred and forty-one fifty. I don't know if you're gonna need any more than that or what you're, what you're gonna need for it.
I believe right there you have fifty-five hundred dollars. Through the chair.
To, um, I would like to suggest that if we could reopen the micro grants for some of that money, if not all of it, that would be a benefit to the town because those went, I believe fairly quickly and were well received. Um, just my suggestion, it would lay, I think it would be nice to reopen that. Um.
What's the proposed dollar amount?
Five thousand five hundred.
Isn't it? Just, just five thousand? Is there anything else that, that might not, you know, the, the total amount spent isn't what we anticipated? We're, you know, Matt, I get, that, that's a great point. I, if we're gonna open it, I'd rather do it with, you know, not in, um, I don't know, I don't, maybe there's no problem in doing it in, um, in installments. Um, I believe that Graceland, the last time that she had, uh, briefed at the conclusion, they, they did have a quote unquote waiting list, or I'm sorry, Terry, you're on the committee, so you, you had some. Yep.
If we do have applications that we were not able to we were not able to fund as a result of, you know, we go, we were, we ran through it before we got to them and it just ended up being, we took them in the order in which they were received. It would be great to be able to go back and take a look at some of those and see if we could fund them.
So are we announcing right now that we have five thousand of unex- uh, unplanned dollars?
Five thousand five hundred, Mr. Chair.
Matt, do you want to make a motion to move?
I moved to reallocate from ARPA administration five thousand five hundred dollars to community micro grants.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? A good one. Uh, not hearing anything further on the motion to move fifty-five hundred uh, from the account, uh, one account to the other, um, admin to the micro grants. How do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, if you could, uh, notify the committee and, yep. Uh, who, uh,
Me?
Terry, Terry was the second. Any, anything else, ARPA?
I'm just wondering about the, um, senior service meals, if they're gonna be able to, it says, it no, if they're gonna be able to use it all. It's going slow.
Wasn't Jackie working on that?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair? On the senior services meals, I had a conversation with Jackie Prime about that, uh, because we have to have the funds committed. We're, she's gonna have to request three written quotes and whichever one's the lowest, she'll have to sign a contract. Excuse me. We would have to sign a contract and then have that committed for the next two years, but as long as we go out, get the quotes, get it, contract in hand, that would technically be committed funds. And we're working on doing that.
Right, so the only big one is the kitchen.
And that, I'm working on the bid package tomorrow. If you want to stop by the office, I could show it to you, Alex.
I believe you.
Oh, okay.
Believe you.
I mean, I'm just.
No, I'm just nervous, fine.
No, I, I, I totally get the urgency and, um, actually I have some boilerplate ones. It's not gonna take me too long, but don't stress about it.
Right, and I'm just. Um.
Stress if we don't get bidders though.
I, I just wanna make, go after the friends once the picket package is out and ask for that money. Okay.
Okay.
That's what I'm waiting for.
Okay. All right.
Hey, Adam, one question from me?
Yes.
Police support and equipment approved two hundred and fifty thousand, spent eighty-nine nine forty-three. Um, does Chief Bennett have any concerns about him being able to go through that before?
Did Chief Bennett spend it? Oh, yeah.
No, the answer is yes.
No, I'll give an update to the board. So his plan is, I talked with them about this, the two hundred fifty K that the board committed to police support and equipment. He's gonna be presented to the capital improvements committee. Uh, I believe that's around November and he should have all, all, everything, everything together with contracts for all those funds to be committed. That's why it says not full amount yet. He just has to get all those contracts in place. I think he was talking about because of some of the HVAC issues they had, some issues with the flooring, looking at doing that, a couple of other things. I believe a cruiser was another one he was looking at doing through the ARPA, uh, so all those funds, I, I'm confident Chief Bennett will have the contracts to expend the rest of those funds, Mr. Rebar.
And now that I see, I have one more, I apologize. I know I said I only have one. I, I lied. Um, premium pay for employees, approv- approved ninety-three thousand five hundred, spent eighty-nine thousand. Is there gonna be any more spend out of that? Because if there is not, then I see an opportunity there that we could pump four thousand five hundred more over to micro grants to give it a flat ten.
I have one more for fifteen hundred, but that's, that, that would give me.
Maybe ninety thousand five hundred spent. So we have three thousand available there.
So they can move three thousand to micro grants if the board was, were so inclined.
When is that fifteen hundred gonna come out?
I have, I will have to check with accounting one of the departments I'm working with right now.
Cause I'd like to not move it until we've, we're finalized that it is gonna go. I mean, the.
Oh, it's, it's, it's committed. It's just, there were some issues with.
Yeah.
I, I can't get into medical issues or, you know.
And that's the last money that's gonna come out of that?
Correct.
So the final expenditure there will be ninety thousand five hundred.
Correct.
And I'd like to further move that we transfer from premium play, pay for employees, three thousand dollars to the, uh, to the, uh, to the community micro grants.
Motion?
Second.
In the second? Any further discussion moving from premium pay, three, three thousand to micro grants? That would bring it up to what?
Eighty-five hundred.
Yep. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the, on the motion for that transfer, ARPA fund transfer, how do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Anything else, ARPA update?
About the TV, TCTV funding.
Oh, that one.
There's no amounts there.
No, no, not full amount yet.
Well, thirty, thirty-five hundred, thirty-five thousand was approved.
Right.
I, I don't have an update on it.
Same course like police, uh, he, if he has any capital, he presented to the capital. And he'll, he's gonna work to get the contracts in hand and remember in the budget too, he's using, he's using some of the. And he'll, he's gonna work to get the contracts in hand, and remember in the budget too, he's using some of the money for the budget for personnel too.
Okay.
But he can only use it for personnel till end of December.
Right, so do you need contracts or anything else?
I will need them by December thirty, the, yeah, the, the last day in December, I'll need all the commitments.
Yeah, TC TV is concerning because they have not, I mean, it says committed, not full amount, but they also haven't spent anything. So.
If they, if they need to spend it on personnel, then, you know, that, that's the funding line that they should be pulling from. But.
About a driveway.
Well, right now, if I may.
Yeah.
It, it, his concern, I, I, was the, his capital portion of the budget was only like nine K. So I'm sure he's gonna use, I don't wanna speak for him because he's not here, but I, I believe he's gonna use some portion for capital.
Right.
And he knows he has to have the contracts in hand.
Alright, let's move on. Uh, Jeff? Town property news policy?
Yes, uh, several things. When we created this policy, we did not have a parks commission yet. Yeah. I know I mentioned it, uh, that when that went to town meeting, when that comes back, if it's approved. Then we would have to revisit this because. Some of the parcels, some of the places, um. That people can use, Gilman Way here, there, uh, falls under the jurisdiction of. The park commissioners. And that's according to Mass General Law, chapter forty five, section one. It says, in this chapter, town shall not include city. In this chapter, park. Shall include city, I mean, include a city or town common. So. That has to be, gotta have to come to some understanding or. Reword this, where, where do people go if they wanna use this park or that park, I think it's. And the, the main thing that I wanted to, to change on this was the elimination of all the fees. Uh. Because it started out. That we had Templeton resident, non-resident or out of town, Templeton resident or business organization. A non-resident, and then they were coming in here and the fees were getting waived and. All these groups suddenly were town sponsored, but somebody wants to have a wedding and they have to pay a fee. My thought is, if. Certain groups don't pay fees, nobody pays fees. If you're gonna have a fee, everybody pays the fee or nobody pays a fee. So I wanted to eliminate. All of the fees and just have it as a matter of. A record of what's going on, where, so well, in this day and age, you know, three groups show up at the same place, same time. Might have a little rowdy discussion. Another thing that, uh, it was just more to clean up the language, under definitions. Excuse me. It has, you know, Templeton resident, and it states any person who resides in the town of Templeton. And its villages, well. If you live in Templeton, I don't care if you live in East Templeton or Otter River or Ballinville, you, you're living in the town of Templeton. It's kind of redundant. To say that and it would clear it up and less stuff to read. Uh, out of town business organization is. Uh, has a mailing address outside of the boundaries of Templeton and its villages. Well, if you're outside of Templeton, you're outside of. Otter River, you're outside of there. It just needs, uh, cleaning up. And also. Perhaps changing, um. Events that are not town sponsored, you have to have your application in thirty days before the date, and if it's town sponsored, it's fifteen days. I, I think we could maybe just make it twenty or, or one timeframe for everybody, same as the fees, I mean.
Right.
Um. It, it's an event, you're showing up someplace, you, you're using that, you know, just advance notice, so. In case something else is there, you can maybe say, well. Can't have it that day, but you could have it the following day because they're gonna be over, it just. And it also has, uh. The parking, which we need to address, and it's, it's handicap parking and a lot of our parks. Don't have that. And I don't know, you know, how much trouble you get into, like if, if somebody actually expects. Handicap access, meaning a, a walkway, a roadway to get to. The gazebo on the town common. If somebody's having a wedding there and somebody shows up. You know, all you have to do is be in a wheelchair or walker or something. I, I see it a lot in, in the winter time, towards the end of a snowstorm. Roads are all plowed, the sidewalks haven't been done, and you see this poor person, they're in the road because. I could walk on the snow on the sidewalk, but there's no sidewalk for them, so they're out on the road in, in a scooter or a wheelchair or something, and it's. Maybe everybody should spend the day in a wheelchair, I don't know, but that's just something that seriously needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. Um. Whether we want to do that. Tonight now, or. I really don't like to kick it down the road, but we need to have. A one policy for the buildings and the grounds and. We need to get the parks thing straightened out, who's, what, where do the people go? Uh. To use this, that, or the other thing. It would be, is it gonna be like a. Like a building permit that lists all the places you gotta go, conservation this, that, or. Do you just say parks has control over all this place, so they go there and town buildings, you come here, just. So. That's my nickel's worth on, on this, um, whether we wanna change this and then. But we need a, a, a whole policy on the, the buildings and everything specific, so.
I agree with you on, um. On fees or otherwise, I, I would. Just make sure that if, if someone was asking. To use, whether it's something under Parks and Rec jurisdiction or a building. And it winds up caught, you know, like, uh, incurring a, a cost. That, that we don't, we don't accept use, you know, not just, uh, charge a fee. But if, if it wound up affecting. Like if, if we were losing money, you know what I mean? Like, uh, if, if we needed to put on a, a detail, a, a cop detail or something. Those costs should not get just automatically absorbed. But it shouldn't be the basis for the fee, so we just, I just wanna make sure that we're not throwing ourselves out there to say. We're losing money on the deal.
We, we had that road race thing, and that was the town sponsored events, so there was no fee paid. But if they needed the detail for that, there was road closures, uh. To me, that's, it's called the service to the, to the people. I mean, it's their land, it's their, they pay for it all. Again, if. Either everybody pays a fee or nobody pays a fee, I think it's just the only fair, safe way to be and. Do that.
We have a policy, Parks and Rec, for the use of Gilman Way in the parks that we were told that we were in control of. They have fees in it. Um, they have criterias on what it was. If somebody came to do a tournament, um. You know, you wanna have a charge, I mean, they're charging the, uh, the people to be in the tournament, so it's just an added. Cost that they pass on to the people that are coming to do the tournament, and it takes care of. Helps with the wear and tear that they're gonna put on those fields. Um, and there's things in our policy that talk about it, they, they, the concession stands under us. We would, we never let anybody use it, but if they want it open and they want us to have be there, it's fifty dollars just to open if they, you know, it talks about. If they need porta potties, so it took what you had, and then we took it and then we looked through it. And we knew that what we did was, we could probably go back and change because. You know, it's the first time we did it, so we didn't know it was gonna be perfect, but we've already booked our, uh, trucks, uh. Touch a truck because that's technically, you know, you have, uh, it's not us. So even though it's in the town entity, you also have, we shared that animal shelter, you know, situation is to town entity. So, and then we also have, right now, we are in the process of finishing up with field hockey. They wanna do a clinic. Um, so we're working with that, um, they pay, we have a fifteen dollar, uh, fee, um, to register and they pay the fifteen dollar fee. But they fell in the category because, uh, the clinics are under, um, they're all arrogant students. So they fall into the, the, um, non-fee. Entity, but right now we're walk, working on the, um, the, um, the liabilities piece of it. You know, and, um, the, so we, we have to work on, is it gonna be a rec sponsored event? And we're gonna be helping, you know, they're gonna be more of a coordinator, or if it's gonna be more of a, um. Their own entities type of situation, so that's what we're doing with them right now. It's their really first kind of thing that we're doing. But, um, we're just trying to, you know, figure out what's best for the community and how to do it. We don't wanna go around charging everybody all kinds of money, but at the same time, if we got Babe Ruth Organization to come in and wanna do. Use the three softball fields into a tournament, then the town of Templeton should have a recruit on. You know, the maintenance of it and all the things that'll happen afterwards, you know, even if they take some of their rubbish out, they'll still be rubbish someplace on the property. We'll still have, have staff go up there, you know, and pay them to do the extra stuff. You get it ready, all the extra things you have to do when you have a big event like that. So not having fees. Is not, you know, when it comes to.
So you're, you're disagreeing with what Jeff said?
Yeah, I, I mean, when it comes to the park, uh, when it comes to big events, big events. Like when we do national play outside day, you know, that's, that's a town thing. And everybody comes and makes sure everything is lovely before it rolls out. If you were gonna have like a wedding there or something, that's gonna be all extra stuff that we have to put out there, you know, get. Our labor or the town, um, DP, uh, um, you know, building grounds to help out if it needs more workers. To get it ready to, and so they should pay a fee so that we can make sure, you know, towards, you know, the income of what happened. I mean, they're, they're asking for it and they're, and they want it lovely, but it's, it would be more than you normally, your normal maintenance.
Can I ask a question? So you guys, you had a, uh, your meeting earlier this week?
Yeah, and I.
Um, did you go to that?
I did.
No, yeah, we didn't, yeah.
I, I saw, I saw on your agenda that you had.
We talked, I, I, I put it on there in case, so that they understood that that's a possibility. We, we did vote on a platform called FMX, the school uses to, um, register events. So that like when I go into the school one, I can go in and I can request the cafeteria or the gym. And then admin on the other side from the school, and Mr. Parker will say the cafeteria, and Mr. Bond says yes or no to the sports, the sports fee, you know, the sports gyms. Um.
Yeah, I just asked whether you wound up having this discussion the other night, okay?
We just, we went over what, what the possibility about the commons. Um, yeah, and we are, that's why we voted.
Yeah, I, I appreciate him bringing up forty five, one.
Yeah, but we voted for a platform to take care of registration, and it holds up to four advents, so it's not just like our assistant and the chair, it could be. The town administrator's office, or it could be, um, the, uh, senior centers, and administrator, management person in it with us. And we can put more than, um, how many people go and register, doesn't cost anything extra. Um, but we want, we believe it's the best way to go forward because we have a Google. Calendar, we have old fashioned ways to do it.
Okay.
So we already have taken advice that will benefit the town that we're about to go with.
What would you like to do with this, Jeff?
I mean. Mr. Chair?
The, um, hang, hang on a sec, Matt. Um, some of, some of the semantic stuff like pulling out the villages, that, that makes sense to me. You know, it's like your comment earlier about, you know, refer. That's, the state looks at us as Templeton. They don't have statistics for Otter River, they don't have to, to statistics for. You know.
There is a sign on route two that says Ballinville, but it's.
I know, but from a state perspective, if you look us up on D Lacerolos, exactly, so. I, I think that aligns with that to be able to just keep it as Templeton, but how, how, moving forward, I don't know if we're gonna be able to. Perform open heart surgery on, on that with fees or otherwise, but what would you like to do with it this, this evening?
Like I said, I really hate to kick it down the road, but. We do need just a comprehensive. Policy that includes. The parks, the commons, the buildings. One, one thing, one place, people to look at. And, you know.
We did commit to that.
This is where you go, this is where you see. And this is what you have to do. It's.
Did we, who do we, uh?
I don't think anyone was assigned.
Yeah, I, I'd look forward to the honor, Jeff.
I got it.
If, if I may. I think there's some confusion going on, maybe it's just getting late and I'm losing track myself.
I know where you're.
I, I think you're saying you wanna eliminate the fees on town property that's not under control of Parks and Rec. Oh, I'm interpreting it. It's, I think.
Well, he used an example as a wedding, right? So that's at the gazebo, that's, that's a, a common, so Parks and Rec would be. The people that would, would, would consider that request.
Right, go by the law.
Yeah, oh, so you're trying to get them to eliminate fees?
The town, to use towns things for a, an event, you wanna have, you know, this, that, the other thing. You. Right now, it says you pay a fee.
Yeah.
To use the common or to use this or to use that.
We're, I don't.
But we, we have a thing.
Decide on it.
But we get, we get to the point.
Example of town resources being used. Just, it's going to happen, it's gonna happen soon. So a bunch of picnic tables are gonna about to be moved into the center, uh, into the common. And it's not for a town event. It's for a, it's for a nonprofit event, for Motopulsa, which would be the, the nonprofit organization. So now the resources of the town are going to be moved, so the question is, once those get moved. Um, the ability of having a fee, you could say, if you need picnic tables. We need to move, you add a little extra and that helps with, you know, because you're always like short money, and you've gotta pay these.
But it's gotta be standardized.
Right.
Right, you're not gonna just say.
Yeah.
Hey, can you help us out?
Yeah, right, but I'm saying is, you're just saying, okay, we're, we're gonna stop everything and we have to make sure these get down there. For, for an organization, because they need them, but saying, you know, they can get their own tables, they might get them cheaper someplace. But, you know, if we have, we're moving tables for, for, for something that's not a town, you know, event for the actual town, yeah.
I, I was thinking like a all.
We're using our resources, um, and I understand we wanna be helpful to our community.
I, I got you.
In lovely, but at the same time, sometimes it's not, it's not really, like, it's awful to say, but you, sometimes you have to say. You know, you could go get your own, you know.
Yeah, I, I would try and adopt some kind of like, all, like, what I was trying to get across, rather than just a flat fee to say, oh, you're having your event. It's fifteen bucks or whatever, fifty, but if you, if we adopted something that, that showed an all a cart menu of. Like, oh, picnic, picnic tables required, uh, tents required, um, electricity required. That, that would actually have some kind of like a fee associated with it.
Policy has that.
Let's try and, because we were kinda talking about two different things. I thought that's where you were going, where we're talking about. Policy, making sure that we have an encompassing policy that's assigned to the right people, you know, the right oversight. Whether it's, um.
But ours is.
Select Board or, or, or Parks and Rec.
Sweet.
Yeah. I got it, but we have, we have, we, we wanna merge these and make sure that we have it overall. We're not gonna come to. An agreement on fee or no fee right now, but we should come up with ideas on what makes sense. And, you know, capture the, the, the spirit from. I understand what you're saying, but on the other side. Jeff is saying, we pay for that as a community, we pay tax, you know, we, we have. All the DPW buildings and grounds, that, that's what they do, you know, they, they manage these things. That's the side he's coming from. I think we can figure it out to say, what is the actual impact to the community and what should be fee bearing and what should not?
Right. That's why I said when we did ours, we did it because we knew that we would be having to come to the park where people say, okay, you're in charge of the park. So how much does it, you know, if you want the, the field hockey, cut it to spork and stuff, so we, we scramble as soon as the governor did us. We voted that a few years ago, um, and we knew that when we did it, we would go, have to go back and tweak it and do the things you have to do. Because we would never, we didn't put it in, um, physical motion yet, we hadn't used it. Once you use something, you start realizing, oh, maybe that doesn't work. And this needs to be better, you know, when you do a policy or something for the first time, you don't really, you're not really sure, will this. Be the right thing for the people of the town of Templeton, or does it need to be taken back, or does it need to be added more pieces to it? And that's how we did. And that's how we did it. That's how our approach was with the commissioners. Our approach was that we would um, we would take what we had and. Try our best and that if we had to go back and, you know, do uh an amendment or change it, that we would. We already knew that. Like the other night, we looked at it, we said, we wanna get rid of that fifteen dollar fee for application. But we have a, we have a um recreational assistant and she's spending all the time and energy doing it. And um, you know, we felt like that fifteen dollar fee is reasonable, you know. You know, for us to take the time out of stopping what we're doing over here and process that, you know.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Through you a question to Commissioner Graves, if I may.
Of course.
Candy, is that policy posted somewhere?
It's right on our website. It's on policies, rules, information.
There have been times I've tried to find things about park recreation and it's not easy to find.
Well, it is easy. You go to town, you go to town website, you go to the Parks and Rec Commission page. And there's a section right on the side where it says soccer, basketball, so forth. And whatever you wanna look at, there's one section that says policies. And it's, you know, and it says information, like it has regera- registration information. Sometimes we'll put applications in there, but our policies have always been there. And our, and our policies are not just like the park, we have policies for each, for our sports. We have sports policies. On our, like our soft, our games, rules and policies and guidelines. For our, so we have those listed too that we we have.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'm looking at, I I know we committed to it, but I'm looking at the 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 work plan right now and I I'm I'm just not. Seeing the. Building new. Yes.
So I know that um and Jeff, I get that you don't wanna kick this down the road if you don't have to, and I understand that, but. I think that we. I think Mike's right in the fact that we don't wanna perform open heart surgery on this thing tonight. We need to take a little bit more time on it because first of all. If we amend this, um it's not just this that has to be changed. The actual uh form also needs to be changed because the form. Has the table on page two, the permit and fee schedule, that's gotta be pulled. Um and this other language within policy, section five, that needs to be changed. Uh and in my mind, I'm also concerned about eliminating leading security deposits. Um I think that those would at least give. Um incentive for people using the public spaces to make sure they clean up after themselves. So I mean, I would, the it's, the the security deposits are fully refundable, assuming that we don't have to do any, you know. Back clean up behind people. So I I I really think that we need to take a little bit more look at this and make sure that number one, we. We clean up everything we need to in here, cause there's more that needs to be done, but also um the associated form that goes with it should be. Done in conjunction so that we're do, so that we're doing everything in one shot.
Well, I I agree with you. I mean, I don't wanna kick it down the road, but it does need to go that way because. We have a lot of parts to. And that came up earlier in the Scott Hall discussion and so forth. So we, you know, the comprehensive. Policy that touches all the bases. And like, so you know, where do you go? Are you using a building or are you using a field or are you using the roads or? This, and if you're using this, then go there. If you're using this, you go to that place.
How do you wanna move forward with it? I'm just, I'm gonna, we're gonna just keep it at the.
Continue to continue with to, you know, to work on a.
Alright.
On a uh. Uh.
I like. Okay.
Because it's.
How does that affect?
I don't wanna do it like we're doing something on.
I'm just saying that you guys are gonna look at that too.
We had committed to it anyway. I'll I'll with you on it. I, you know, I think some of the 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 changes tonight, but yeah. Look at the fee schedule as well. Good for now?
Yes.
Alright. Uh that ends old business. Um. We do have an executive session uh update. That uh we need because um Nat's gonna participate. We do need TCTV to help facilitate um. A uh, a breakout room. To be able to do that. So if they wanna get that prepped in the meantime. Um if we could do some abbreviated board member comments, just looking at the hour.
I'm just gonna.
Okay.
So it's early yet.
It's early.
Wanna start off? If I may, yeah. I uh, I see one comment. Uh I have several, but I'm just gonna show this out. I went to the town website and every place to go with that stuff. And you click on departments and then you go over, you look across, you s- see Public Works Office. When you click on that and what pops up? Public Service. We changed that from Public Works to Public Service like in twenty twenty. So. Again, this is just transparency and clearance and and, you know, ease for people. You know, it's like. Public, so you you hit Public Works and you get the Public Service. It's like, wait a minute, what the heck? Did I hit something wrong? It should just be, it's continuity and. Again, it's. For the residents, for people that just go there and look down the website. And the financial transparency thing was part of the goal stuff, you know, adjust that. But uh. Other than that. That's all I have.
Okay. Tim?
Got a couple of quick things. We all received a letter from the ATA. And everybody was copied on this. The police chief was copied on this. The TA was copied on this. It was dated Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. At four oh five PM. Just to notify you, town property permit was issued to Jack Jackie Prime for the farmers markets. The dates, six nine, seven fourteen, had already passed before we, this was shared with us. Eight eleven and nine eight. Now all those dates are behind us. But again, to to Jeff's point, talking about our communications, attention to detail. Two events had passed, months had gone by, and we were just getting notification. That that's just poor, that's poor performance. I have some concerns. Town departments are meeting, but I can't find their meeting minutes and there are no videos. Um, I know we've talked about it before. We have kind of kicked it back and forth. I'm to the point, the next one I find, I'm gonna submit the O M L. These are public bodies, they're bound by the same rules that we are. And enough's enough, it's gotta stop.
Who really does? Who are you talking?
I will address that separately. We have organizations that are meeting and I cannot find.
You start off, I thought you said town departments.
Departments, yes.
I don't understand.
Like Parks and Rec, oh, I'm gonna call you out. It wasn't recorded, but.
I'm, I was thinking.
Where where are the meeting minutes?
They're on there, but for this one, we just did the nine.
No, not not this one, you just did.
All our minutes, minutes are on my town government. The only, she has to put, I I don't know if she posted it, my new, my new thing, but.
And the official town website is WWW dot Templeton MA dot gov.
There's a link on my page to it. That's what I was taught to do.
Okay.
So is a link on, you can go to Templeton Parks and Rec, the page on my Templeton MA dot gov. Which I know, cause I said a million times to people.
I know.
And uh you go there, right on the front, it talks about who we all are. There's a, there's a statement and it tells you where you can find our minutes. And there's a link, I have a link there. I put the link there, cause I figured it should be there. I figured it should be there. But it's on my town government, cause that's where I was told it needed to be. You know, that's what I was told to do.
Understood. And and thick skin, I'm trying to do this correctly.
On the town website, there's no real entity place to put that. And to bring it up, the way you, like if you would put on the town website, the way our pages that we've given, there's no real place to put it. So I would have to just like make up something, like I do like a file thing, file, file, file and throw it in like I do. When you go and see my information, where my policies are, I would have to do something similar for minutes because there's. That that system is wonky. It doesn't have the right, it doesn't have, like my town government has that piece where you just put it right with your, with your. It has your agenda there, it had what time it was. So that's why it's lovely, cause it's like right there. And you guys put your packets there and you, your minutes are there. Um so. I don't, I didn't realize it had to be two places, cause I already have the tag where you click it and you go there. So.
That's my point, Candy. It's people can't always find it because it's in two places. And they're not being cross linked. It comes back to a function of IT.
Well, yours is, I only find you, I never look on the town website of yours. I look at my town government. That's where I look for the. Selectment, that's where I read it.
Right, but any department, when I click on a department, I should be able to find everything I want and it's not always there. The the one, it's, I'm bringing this up because Monday night EDIC met in this room.
Right.
When I was on my way home from work, the lights were still on, there were cars everywhere. And I said, huh. Boy, by the time I turned on TCTV, I missed it. But I watched a couple of other things roll through, but then. I start looking going, huh, interesting. One that I saw that was like two o'clock in the morning, I didn't stay awake to watch that one. Was Agricultural Commission, which had not been recorded in E L.
The mature is not recorded, the others are not recorded.
I'm aware.
There's many other departments that are, the ones that are recorded.
And and again, Candy, I said thick skin. I said multiple town departments. I agree with you.
But then if you go into Parks and Rec, if we get recorded. Um my, I have members that that, I only have four members, that's a seven board. And um this would involve me trying to work around TCTV and totally availability. So then my people who don't have a high availability, it now lowers my threshold to possibly have meetings. Okay. Because I have like, you know, I have a nurse, I have this and they have other schedules. So we go by them when they're available. So. If TCTV, if Monday night's taken, like, so at the same time we're doing our meeting, there was something here. He could have not done Monday night. I would not be able to have gotten a meeting for this month because they're going, some members are going to away, they're going away.
Tim, Tim and Ken's.
We can take that one offline. This is board member comments. Uh two more quick things and I will be quick, I promise. Um I submitted a two checks for inferred infractions and violations of a town bylaw. And of potentially a Massachusetts general law. On August twenty second, I have a letter that came to me certified registered mail. It was hand delivered on twenty four August by the United States Postal Service. And the checks were returned to me. I'm in receipt of the checks. The check is being returned to you. And it says, as we do not have an outstanding invoice to apply the check to, it is enclosed and being returned to you. Thank you, Holly Young, Assistant Town Administrator. First of all, this was submitted through the chair and I would have expected it to go through Mister Lamontaine as our chief financial officer. Not delegate it down to somebody else. I attempted to to follow the letter of the law. I am waiting for the follow-up phone call from the Attorney General's Office to find out what are my next steps. Quite frankly, I'm pissed. And yes, I'm pissed. I'm doing the right thing. And somebody decided to make it wrong. Does not work for me, I'm sorry. Along that same line. I wasn't gonna say this, I am gonna say this. EDIC meeting. Two members of this board, one who sits on the EDIC, one who sat in the audience. Made a couple of comments, made some actions, made some statements that were absolutely mind boggling and an absolute embarrassment. I was like, oh my God, what just happened? We go backwards to the last Board of Selectmen meeting, the chair melted down. I'm glad I recused myself for item N. It's a good thing I wasn't in the room, cause I'd have probably gotten in trouble. And that's not a good thing at all. You know, maintaining good order and discipline, that includes you, Mister Chair, sitting there. You apologized, but damn it, they were hollow apologies. They weren't worth it, cause they, my opinion, what I observed, not sincere.
So. To your point.
I.
Go ahead. I I absolutely will maintain order and discipline during the meeting. You're, you're a hundred percent correct.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna ask you to do it equitably. Because you allow other people to talk over, you allow other people to present what they want, and it's like pick and choose. Can't do that. I uh, don't yet know how I'm going. Again, this is the second part of a conversation. I'm waiting for the call back from the Attorney General's Office. Before I take my next step. So I'm just giving you the shot across the bow and heads up. It did not resonate well with me. And that was another one of the very late night, one AM, watching our meeting. I had vowed I would not watch it because I recused myself. But as I started looking into it, I was like, oh my God.
Obviously. It it's your wife, what, of course, it's going to be emotional.
You were as well, sir.
And you're not now.
I didn't gaslight anybody, Terry.
Alright. Yes, thank you. Anything else, Tim?
No.
Matt?
I have nothing this evening, your Mister Chair.
Okay, Terry.
I'm gonna hold off till next, but uh just again, for the public servants that are trying to. Help and give their time, I just. Nine eleven and even just in this room, I don't know what to say and. I'm flabbergasted on the thanklessness that goes on.
Thanks. Now I've got no comments this evening. Uh that concludes board member comments. We're gonna go uh and head. And I will uh ask for a motion to go into executive session, and clear the room. TCTV, if you could help out, um so we're able to hold that with uh Matt. Um but I wanted to obtain a motion to go into executive session. And that's for Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A subsection twenty-one A three strategy, strategy having to do with collective bargaining.
I'm in this.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, any comment? Or discussion? Hearing none on the motion to go into executive session, how do you vote, Tim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I mean, yes as well, let's go ahead and.